Good evening. Now, the fall of the order. Fairfax Town Council meeting for Tuesday, January 16, 2018. And our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Okay. And next order of business is a roll call.
Councilmember Goddard.
Here.
Councilmember Kohler, Vice Mayor Kohler, sorry.
Yeah, here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor.
I'm here. Okay. So, just wanted to also report out that we had a special meeting in closed session involving a public performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 for our town attorney and also a privileged conference of legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. So with that, we, our next item would be approval of agenda and, oh no, sorry, this is my second meeting here.
I was supposed to say nothing to report out.
Right. And we had nothing to report out in our closed session. So, would like to remind everyone about our meeting protocol.
Before we do that, I think we want a motion to approve the agenda.
And affidavit.
And affidavit of posted.
Okay. No, you're right.
And I would like to make that motion.
Sure.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, our meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at all meetings. The council and audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and maintain standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cell phones or place them in silent mode. We review our agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, would be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjournment or to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend the rule. And now time for announcements. Fairfax Police are now using Nixle, in addition to Nextdoor, to send out emergency alerts as well as general notification messages such as road closures, police activity, and other warnings. It's a great idea to sign up for Nixle. You can text your ZIP code from your cellphone to 888-777. Text it to 888-777 and then you can receive emergency notifications from the police. We do have some vacancies on some boards and commissions. We have one on the Planning Commission. We have a January 29 deadline to apply. We have a vacancy on our volunteer board. And do we still have one on the Open Space Committee? No, we filled that tonight. And we're very pleased to appoint Shelley Clark to our Open Space. So that's been filled. We have a full Open Space Committee. If you want to apply for the Planning Commission or Volunteer Board, applications are available at Town Hall or on the Town website. And you can contact our clerk, Michelle Gardner, for information. As usual, our Fairfax food pantry is open every Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Volunteers are always needed. It's a great way to help out with the community and let people know that are in need of food. They can come and get food, no questions asked. And there is definitely a need for food out there, even in our economy. So with that, we would open it up to, oh, that's right, does anyone else have?
Yes, no, no, no. I just wanted to, would you please let people know what the deadline is for the Planning Commission applications?
Sure. It's January 29.
Did you say that already? Did I miss?
I think I did, but.
Okay. But January 29.
January 29.
Because that's an important one. The others don't really have deadlines.
Right.
And we're accepting applications for the Planning Commission.
Yeah. I'm not sure how widely known that is. So, here, here.
Okay. So, anyone interested?
That's whoever repeating it over and over.
Okay. Any other announcements by council persons? Okay. Then at this time, we would like to open it up for public expression. If you wish to address the council on matters not listed on the agenda, come up to the podium, state your name and address if you're comfortable. And we'll allow three minutes to speak and five minutes if representing a group. And a reminder, we're not permitted to take action and we're strictly limit, and we have, and there are strict limits on our ability to discuss un-agendized items unless it can be demonstrated to be an emergency. So, we're happy to hear from folks, but we're not able to take action on matters. So if we have someone at the microphone, if you would be so kind to state your name and tell us what's on your mic.
Tom O'Neill, Dominga Avenue, Fairfax, California. Happy New Year, everybody. First chance to wish you guys Happy New Year. And also, I'm here tonight because every New Year's for quite a few years now, I get pretty sad on New Year's Eve because two of my best friends killed, suicided out by bullet, and I don't get to see them anymore. And I used to have dinner with this one friend of mine's family every New Year's Eve for quite a few years. So every New Year's Eve, it's like, you know, it's a pain in my heart thinking about my poor friend that's not around anymore, you know? And so I just wanted to say that if anybody knows somebody that's suffering depression and if you think they're suicidal, and especially if they voice that concern to anybody, it's incumbent upon all of us to take action and to call local authorities, principally the police department, and say, hey, this person is talking about suicide. Let somebody know. Because I think that could be, you know, it might be of help, you know? Who knows? And, you know, because just recently too, I've heard about a local family that had a very young family member suicide out from this town just recently. And it's pretty much being swept under the rug. There's been no public discussion about it or anything, you know? Nothing printed. And I can understand a family that doesn't want to, that's feeling maybe shame even from something like that. But I think it behooves everybody to share in an honest, open discussion about such things, maybe in the hopes of helping another family, you know? And so I would just like to express that to the Town Council and our collective members here tonight.
Okay.
You know? So, I got 30 seconds left. I can't think of anything else to say.
Okay.
Except I have new batches of jams and jellies.
Okay. Thanks so much, Tom.
Mayor.
Happy New Year, Tom.
Mayor, if I may, I'm not recommending, thank you very much, Tom, for bringing this up here. And I just wanted to make it clear, I mean, there's other places to go besides the police also if people are not comfortable. And it's very difficult, especially there's suicide hotlines. There's, you know, Marin General has, you know, immediate walk-in clinic, Unit B, and I think it's changed its name, but it's right next to Unit A, which is, you know, they have very real resources. And there's half a dozen suicide lines that you can call. And one of the most difficult questions for a family member to ask is about suicide. It's a very difficult thing to ask for. And it can be your family, it can be somebody in the community. If there's somebody of concern, definitely, there are many avenues to help. And, you know, the community is there to help. And so please do take that advice.
Yeah, we as a community is.
Thank you very much for bringing that up.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Frank now is talking about it, by the way. Okay, thanks, Frank. Bye, guys.
Hello, Jody. Jody, Tim's Cascade Drive. And having, being a part of a family that also experienced a suicide, I completely agree. It's a really important subject to put on the table and to talk about and bring forward and do the best you can to provide support and help. So, as your Commissioner on Aging for the Town of Fairfax, I wanted just to do my little quick report and let you know, first of all, that the Commission on Aging for the Board of Supervisors is meeting on February 1st. We have a educational event once a month, and the next one will be that day. It is at 10 o'clock, and it will be at Whistle Stop. And it's the second part of a really excellent conversation about the dimensions of dementia. This is part two. And last month at Whistle Stop, it was really well attended and very excellent presentation. This one on February 1st will focus on both, well, understanding Alzheimer's in particular as well as identifying options and difficulties with therapeutics that are used for Alzheimer's. And there will also be a research scientist there to talk about a particular intervention that he's designed and worked with and studied that is an integrative approach to reversing the symptoms of Alzheimer's disease. So if it's something you're interested in, it would be great to be there and to learn a little bit more about it. The Age Friendly Fairfax Task Force that I also chair, we had a meeting on December 15th, an excellent meeting. We have two council, well, a current and a former councilperson, Barbara and David Weinstoff, that are part of our group, which is, we're deeply appreciative of. We also are now, as of January 2nd, a part of the AARP's network of age-friendly communities. The AARP came in as a sort of a liaison with the World Health Organization a few years ago to assist communities, cities, and communities in the United States. And it's a second network. So we are now part of that. We were the 199th city in the United States to become a part of that. And folks from AARP would like to come to one of our council meetings in the next month or two and actually do a formal presentation. So I'm working to schedule that with our schedule. So we'll be back for that. We also are working, well, I wanted to appreciate Barbara for having worked an excellent first draft of our actions to date, how far we've, what we've accomplished so far on our action plan, our strategic action plan. She did an excellent scorecard of that, of our age-friendly actions. And while I'm at it, let me just thank you also for the work for the scorecard for the Climate Action Plan, which is excellent too. So the next Age Friendly Fairfax Forum, this will be on January 26th. It will be our first one held in the library from 1:00 to 2:00. And the topic is Stretching Your Dollars for Financial Stability. So we want to help look at how you plan your financial future so that you have enough money, hopefully, to last your, throughout your golden years, as we say. So we have an excellent speaker coming from Spark Point for that topic. And the other thing we're starting next month at the library is what we're calling Social Services Navigator, which basically is sort of me sitting for 30 minutes with anyone who might have any questions or concerns or need some guidance on what kinds of resources and programs and services are available for older adults in any number of situations. So I've posted both of these on Nextdoor and I've gotten a couple people, a couple responses of folks coming. So I'm glad to know that folks are seeing it there and that, and hopefully, if I can't answer some of the questions, I can help figure out where to get those answers for folks who come. And I think that's all. Just wanted to give you that update.
When will you be holding the Social Services Navigation?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. It'll be from 12:30 to 1:00, the same day, on the 26th, January 26th. So it'll be the half an hour before each forum. And all the forums will be on the fourth Friday of the month at the library from 1:00 to 2:00. And Navigation is 12:30 to 1:00, that half hour before.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, because there's just so many questions that people have that if they get pointed in the right direction, social, to social services or whomever, that's good.
Again and again, I hear about how, when you're in this situation with older adult, your parents, it's very often just a mystery in terms of what to do and how to navigate the system. And there are some good roadmaps. So I hope to help folks with those a little bit.
Jody, you might want to give the flyer to Michelle. She said she can, on the monthly forums, and she can post that on the website. And for people out there also, went out in the recreation booklet.
Yes.
That got mailed to everyone in Fairfax. It's in there, but have it on the website will be great too.
Yeah. And I can get the full list. The flyer that we have just has the next two, but I'll forward the other one. I'll forward it to you with all of them soon. Okay.
And Jody, could you repeat again when the Alzheimer's presentation?
Yeah. It will be February 1st. It's at Whistle Stop, and that's from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Frank Agar, 13 Minute Way, Fairfax. Just to follow up on your previous person that commented under open time. In the past couple of weeks, two Fairfax boys have committed suicide. I think there needs to be a community dialogue. We need to see what's going on here, what's behind all of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Applewell, 61 Woodland. So I've been really pleased and excited, as I think many people in Fairfax have been, about all the information that's been getting disseminated around the fire stuff and that that whole topic has been brought up. But, you know, I've chatted with the chiefs just one-on-one, and I've asked a lot of questions and taking a lot of this information in, certain things have become clear to me that if we were to have something on the order of what happened in Sonoma this year, it's highly unlikely that any engines are going to reach my property directly. And with all the things we've been learning about vegetation and the proper defensible space and all these things, that there's so many odd configurations up where I am. I'm Canopita, hills behind me, there's hundreds of trees, and I could do everything under the sun, and I'm still going to be extremely vulnerable. So what I would like to ask and what I'd like to just kind of put out there for the council to think about is what could be done or where could we find some budget where we could actually get some human beings that are out in the vegetation clearing some of that and just reducing some of the vegetation that's out there? Is there any kind of fire breaks that can be made? Something that would actually possibly have an impact on less chance of something crazy getting started and flying over the hill? And Todd Landau's been great, and there's been all this great information and fire safe committees, and I support all of it, and it's fabulous. But I'm concerned that there's just no resources going to actually reducing the vegetation. And I know when I was at the first meeting at Lyndon Novi's, we had, Larry was there from MMWD, and he said that they had once had 12 rangers out in that area and they were down to six. So there's less people patrolling, less people seeing whether there's people camping out there. And it just feels to me that like, there's not, we don't, we don't have adequate resources going against that piece of it, and no one's talking about that piece of it. So I don't know if there's some budget that we could put on that. Can we make some summer jobs for kids? There's a lot of people out of work here, or not, underemployed. Can we get a relationship with San Quentin and get some inmates over here? I've heard that things like that were done in decades past. So I just, just putting it out there that as we are all moving forwards and we're thinking about fire, is there any steps we can take to somehow deal with that? We had crazy rains last year, so a lot of vegetation, and I'm just scared, you know, because of what happened in Sonoma. And it seems like the experts are saying we're just as vulnerable here. So that's what I just wanted to kind of put that out there. Thank you.
Sure. If you have a comment.
Just to share something, and the budgeting question would come during the budgeting time, and this is a really important conversation budget-wise. But the Cascade Canyon Firewise Group, we've been meeting very actively. Jody, I'm going to ask you to remind me the date that we're going to do the broom pole. But there will be a community broom pole as organized just by the Cascade neighborhood for now in partnership with the Marine Conservation League. Linda's helped to set that up. And that's one of these very first steps that it will take. And as different communities are starting, neighborhoods are starting their firewise to procure their status, these are the things that we have easier access to money that could then help us to do more of these types of big clearing days. And then, as I said, the larger question of budgeting for those kinds of more significant actions will be had. What's the date of it, Jody? I'm sorry.
March 10th, Saturday that day. Anybody can join us for, yeah, Big French Broom Pole. And if by chance it's raining that day, it'll be the following Saturday is our plan, the 17th.
Thank you.
But the 10th.
And where will that be?
We, that's a good question. I'd have to actually ask Lyndon Novi to, we haven't figured out exactly where we're going to meet, but it will be in Cascade Canyon someplace. So if people are interested and think they might have time and energy, we have an email list.
Yeah, we will put it on that list.
There we go. Yeah.
And let's hope for a good soaking right beforehand. And it's a great activity for the OCD among us.
You can also post it on the Town Website, even though it's primarily for Cascade Canyon.
And actually, Mayor, from me.
Sure.
Also, there's another Firewise community neighborhood starting up on Scenic Hill. And perhaps this should have been in the announcement things, but this, Yvonne Roberts has been, has set out a notice on various different people at that neighborhood. There's been a meeting location change that Sunday, January 21st at 6:00 PM. It has changed to Joanna Short's house at 176 Kamal Pius. And, I'm sorry, that's a steering committee meeting, but, yeah, you're right. But just put it out there, that's, basically that is getting, you know, people on that neighborhood should be aware that there's another Firewise community starting there. There has also, to your answer to a bit, yes, there has been defensible, you know, defensible space clearing, you know, over the years there. And I mean, I think it's great that it's on everybody's radar because it's a very real danger that we all have living in this wii zone. And it's an ongoing effort on a lot of fronts that we've all got to do. And really, that's how, how we're going to better protect ourselves is be aware of it and do our own things and community things that are wider out and, you know, working with the fire community to make sure we have defensible space, so.
And it's just super important to, to create as much defensible space around your own home and dwelling. It's, the larger fuel load issues are, might be something that we have to tackle another day at another level. But, okay, thank you.
I want to ask what kind of progress has been made regarding the encroachment on the public path adjacent to 450 Cascade that goes up to Pine? And also, I want to reiterate the importance of opening that path. I was at a meeting regarding fire this last fall, which was attended by a consultant who advises creating strategic fire breaks, as well as a retired fireman who was one of the people who fought the fires in the Oakland Hills. We talked about the public pathways, whether they were a safe way to get in or out. He said that they were fighting that big wooden hotel in Berkeley, and they used one of those paths to take their fire hoses up, to get behind the hotel, to get on top of it. Had they not been able to do that, they might have lost the hotel, in which case Berkeley would have been gone. And because of the skinny roads, the hilly roads, going all the way up through the upper Cascades, I think that should something happen, we want to have every alternative available to help anyone who's up there trying to fight the fire. So I really would like to see some attention put to that easement. And I've been asking for this for over a year. I did run into Mark Lockaby at Town Hall, who said that he had, after the council meeting before the election where I brought this up, had gone up and spoken to the woman at the Pine, I mean, the Cascade Drive house, who said that she had not planted the bamboo and didn't care about it. But that's as much as has been done. And I would like to see some more action on it, you know, before the fence gets even further into our pathway.
So Garrett, can we have Mark do more follow-up on that to see if we can actually formally ask them to cut it down? Maybe a letter going out, but Mark, do another follow-up and see if he can figure out who planted it? Thanks.
And also the fence that has moved into about.
I don't know that we can fix the fence right now, but I think we can probably, we're doing kind of a stepwise approach on that kind of stuff. But I think if we can remove the stand of bamboo, but isn't there other bamboo in that area? Bamboo is a fire hazard.
Not blocking the pathway.
Okay. But bamboo is a fire hazard in general, so.
There's bamboo all over Fairfax. There's bamboo in the way in, the way out. It's all over. Yes, so there.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak at public time? Okay, seeing none, then let's move on to our consent calendar. And does anyone have any items, anyone on the council, any items that would like to poll for general discussion?
No, I'd just like to make a comment on one item that doesn't need to be polled.
Okay. Anyone else have any items that'd like to poll or comment on? Okay, what was your comment, Barbara?
Oh, sorry. It's on the Vice Mayor Kohler's letter in opposition to CPUC's draft resolution. Basically, they're trying to ratchet down onto community choice aggregates and trying to do it by resolution rather than proceeding. So we got this letter in because of the timing, and we just heard that they had moved their actual hearing to February 8th. I don't think we need to send another letter, but just wanted to let you know that there's a little more time on this one as far as when they actually have a hearing on it. So FYI.
Well, thank you, and thanks for keeping such close tabs on this very important issue.
I just wanted to, just wanted to thank Barbara on behalf of the Climate Action Committee in general for keeping the scorecard going. Barbara started out on the Climate Action Committee, and even since she is no longer the council representative to the committee, Barbara has continued to keep the scorecard updated, and it's really appreciated. So thank you. It's worth looking at, everyone.
Thank you. It's good for a person with a little obsessive compulsive, but I just keep track of everything we do that's related, so it makes it easy.
Great service just to remind us. And then, is there anyone from the public house? Or John, did you have anything?
Yeah, I basically, I wanted to make a comment about the Meadowway Bridge, which is presumably what you're standing up about, Frank, too. Yeah, it wasn't clear to me, I mean, basically, reducing the amount of concrete wall there and having half concrete wall and half riprap, and I think that's going in the right direction. But it wasn't clear to me from the material in the packet, you know, before and after of that, that we're talking about. So I just wanted to make that comment on it. And Frank, you want to? I guess I should let you say that.
Yeah. And then, okay, anyone from the public want to comment on any items on consent?
Thank you. Frank Agar again from 13 Minute Way. I'm asking that Item 8 be pulled from the consent and placed under discussion. This is a new proposal for retaining portions of the creek, and there's some discussion of some access. There was a poll done in the neighborhood, and 15.
talking about. So I just wanted to make that comment on it. And Frank, you want to? All right, I guess I should let you say that.
Yeah, and then, okay, anyone from the public want to comment on any items on consent?
Thank you. Frank Agar again from 13 Meadowway. I'm asking that Item 8 be pulled from the consent and placed under discussion. This is a new proposal for, for retaining portions of the creek, and, and there's some discussion of some access. There was a poll done in the neighborhood, and 15 people responded, and, and so it's resulted in this change. This is a major project affecting the Cascade Canyon, and it, it needs to be publicly discussed, the changes. Thank you. I'm just asking it be pulled for discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Bringing it back to, to our council, does anyone, I wouldn't, I myself wouldn't mind having a brief discussion on this, too. Item 8, it would be at the end of the, the meeting tonight.
I'd support that also.
Why don't I make a motion to pull Item 8 from the consent calendar? So kind of do it formally?
Sure.
Is that okay?
I'll second that.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Is that a motion just to pull that? And I would move approval of consent with the exception of the?
Of Item 8?
Of Item 8, then that has been pulled for discussion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so.
You made the motion.
Sure. I'm sorry, the, we had a motion, I believe it was.
John made the motion, Renee seconded.
Oh, to approve the consent calendar.
Yes, for approval of consent, pulling was Barbara.
Okay, so Item 8 will here at the end of our agenda, and.
Now it's time for council members to make brief reports.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. It's, it's now walking and chewing gum at the same time. Now is our time for brief reports and announcements by council members about assignments, committees, and activities, including reports from meetings attended at town expense. And why don't we begin with Renee? We'll go from right to left.
Sure. And actually, before I start, I, I hope it's okay to make an announcement out of turn here, but we were speaking of Firewise, that's several of my committee reports. But February 9th, from 11 until 1, at the San Rafael Community Center, is a countywide Firewise, Fire Safe Marin meeting, which I encourage anyone who's listening that lives in any of the neighborhoods, or where people are interested in starting to organize, it's an excellent place to get information to start your process. So this month, which was interrupted by two weeks, I attended the chamber party. It's hard not to say chamber potty. You didn't get that? Several Firewise community meetings. So one was a, a walkabout, a walkthrough on Upper Cypress, where we went, took a portion of the roadway and actually walked house to house to house, and looked at vegetation, looked at roadway clearance, looked at really specific things that those homeowners could do. The neighbors who live in those homes that we walked about were there. It was extremely educational, and I think useful and actionable. Ray Moritz has committed more time and energy than I could ever explain, and we are ever in his debt. That was one day, and the next day, he came down to Cascade to both Jody Timms and my house. And then we invited neighbors from whoever wanted to come to look at our houses. And he has offered that to other neighbors who are interested in showing up for that. He has a wealth of knowledge. We've talked a lot about roadway clearance, and, again, the broom removal day that we'll be doing. Two other meetings with that group, just planning meetings, Steering Committee meetings. We have newsletter going out, we're starting a webpage. So it's all very exciting, and it's all very doable on a neighbor, on a neighborhood scale. I attended the Marin Prevention Network, which is now called the Coalition, the Marin Prevention Network is countywide level, but the coalitions are what? The Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative, in combination with the Twin Cities Healthy Community Collaborative. This all works around youth abuse and use of drugs and alcohol, and serious issues with mental health and our young folks today. Attended a meeting at Central Marin Police Authority, a homeless subcommittee meeting with the MCCMC, Mayors and Council Members Group. It's an ad hoc committee. We're looking at portable showers and how that will be used. And we're talking about the Community Homeless Fund, which each of our cities pays into, and how that might continue, and what it might continue to fund as it goes forward. I got to attend the Martin Luther King Celebration, Birthday Celebration yesterday in Marin City, which was a wonderful opportunity to experience a community in celebration, a community that is not always in celebration, and a really deep conversation about some of the issues around inequity and our new ranking as the number one county greatest income disparity and county with the most racial inequity. So the conversation around the roundtables was digging deeply in talking with different members of different communities, supervisors, the Director of the Housing Authority, and many, many Marin City community members really voicing their thoughts, their concerns, and coming to some, some ideas about what we can do as a larger community. So it was a, really a privilege to be there. Thanks.
Thank you. And Barbara?
Okay, so I attended the Community Media Center of Marin Board Meeting. So these are the folks that film our meetings and do a wonderful job. Also attended the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce Holiday Party. And one of the things that was good about that is we kind of see new businesses in town. And the Way Station, which is the, at the old Chevron Gas Station, the owner was there, and it looks like, cross your fingers, it may be opening soon in the middle of the rainy season. But it was good to see him, so hopefully we see that. And also met somebody who runs the martial arts studio across from Good Earth. So it really tells me, and he's not a member of the Chamber, a young gentleman, seems like the Chamber needs to do a little more reaching out to some of the newer businesses because they're, they're not involved in the Chamber, and we could have more happening, I think, that would do more good for the businesses. Also, all of us were at the Cannabis Panel Discussion in December. I added you just now. And then, another thing, I attended the Marin Telecommunications Agency. I'm now the Chair of that group. But one of the things we're doing is, we'll be restructuring and downsizing Marin Telecommunications. It's an opportunity now, since our executive officer is retiring. And so I'm on the Recruitment Committee, but we're looking for a half-time executive director, officer. And we're really restructuring and minimizing and narrowing the role of MTA because the state law, which is known as DIFCA, really removes so much local authority that it makes sense for us to see what we can do to make sure the jurisdictions in MTA get more franchise fees. So that's one of the things I've been working on for the last several months, and we're hoping to change that in the next probably couple of months. Age-friendly, I'm honored to be on that task force. Jody is an amazing chair, and we start and end on time, which is an hour and a quarter. Never goes any longer, and we get a lot done. So that's something we on the council could probably take a page from that book. And then, Jody and I met with the Executive Director of the Chamber to talk more about age-friendly tips and techniques to start the conversation with the businesses about low or no-cost things they can do to make their businesses more age-friendly. And it really pays off because older adults tend to be very loyal customers. So there are things you can do, like increase your lighting, really no cost, or just be really friendly. So we started that conversation, and it's, Rob's, Rob and I just sent out something on age-friendly to the Chamber. So we're starting that. The other thing I've been involved with is working with Jim Frazier of Tiburon and a couple of other council members on a very small task force, working with Senator McGuire to bring back a statewide funding program for the Yellow School Bus Program. So I've reached out to a lot of school district agency types, and also, we met with Marin Transit. Frankly, it's going to be a long road to hoe because the governor just vetoed a bill that would provide just a cost of living to what they already get. So it's not looking really positive, but we think we may be able to capture some of the cap and trade funding because the last auction brought in 862 million in a quarter. So maybe there's a little bit of money we can throw at the Yellow School Bus Program statewide. Also, Jody and I met with Larry Lauder about bringing back the pedestrian flag program, low-tech approach, and Larry would take it over as a volunteer. So I think we're moving in a good direction there. And one of the things I do is I'm the webmaster for the Open Space Committee, and I worked on some repairs to that website in December and January. So that's it, not much.
Peter, can I backstep one second? Ben, I want to just thank you so much for your organization of the Cannabis Panel. It was excellent. It was dense. I think we learned a ton. We could dissect it, and it will be a really useful part of the conversations we have going forward. But you really did an excellent job organizing, and I, I appreciate it, and I know everyone who attended did as well. So thanks.
Indeed. Thank, thank you, Ben. Okay, John?
Yeah, and I was, all of us, of course, attended that panel, and I would like to remind viewers and people in the audience that that was recorded. And it's available to, it's, it's very educational to watch this. I mean, there's a lot of different aspects to the marijuana issue, and there's a lot to be learned, even, you know, just, if you haven't watched that, it's really worth the time. And, let me see. And so, my report on what I've been doing besides that, let me see, I guess I went to a couple of paramedic authority meetings, and, you know, and fun stuff like crash fares for the sustainable Fairfax and stuff like that, holiday party here, as well as the Marijuana Forum. I mean, that was basically educational. I've been working a lot, I don't know, six days' worth or something like that, with the North Bay Conservation Corps, basically on a number of trails around Fairfax. There's one that's getting finished up, but tomorrow morning there's about an hour's worth of work left on it, connecting Park Lane to the Upper Scenic. There's also a complete network now that goes, well, you can start at the bottom of Tamalpais and cross from one to the next, but the one that, the piece that was just finished was going from Tamalpais up to Scenic. And then there's Midway Lane, which connects, even with Berry Trail, goes across Midway Lane, that tees into that other one that goes up to the top. So what we're looking at is a, with the exception of one, there's a complete network there that will be, you know, that ridge neighborhood at the top of Scenic Hill. Then we'll have trail alternatives to get down into town. Right now, you can do a circuit around lower on that hill. And it looks like tomorrow we might start doing some work on, from Manzanita going down to the Cascade end of Frustick, is be the next trail on that. And earlier during open time, that, the, the trail out between Pine and Cascade, that got, right away, got asked about there. That's on the list, too, a little bit farther down. So that's coming up. So, let me see. I also met, getting bids with, from a couple of different contractors. One was Forest Terrace Steps. We are going to hopefully be receiving a bid on that, so we'll see how much it'll cost. Those, those steps have become dilapidated. They've been rebuilt a couple of times over the years, and they need it again. So I met with people bidding on that, as well as another one up on Scenic Hill, the last one there. I went to a couple of Transportation Authority meetings. One of them actually was their lunch at no expense to the town. And also, two Fireboard meetings. One of the things, we're, we have an agenda item later on. We're looking at a different fire chief and different ways of solving that. And I guess that's a different agenda item, but there's been a number of meetings in relation to that. We're thinking about either a new fire chief or doing a contract for services in terms of sharing a file, fire chief with Marin County Fire. And there's, we're definitely looking for input from the public, but that's an agenda item later. So I shouldn't go into that in too much detail, except stay tuned.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, John. And Bruce, anything to report?
Well, it's, this microphone is crazy. So it's been a quieter month for me. Maybe after this meeting, I'll have some committee meetings to go to. We did do the Climate Action Committee meeting, as we do every month, and, along, along with Peter. And the, and I also attended the Flood Zone 9 meeting, which, to which the, the folks at Flood Zone 9 specifically seem to be inviting some of the new council members. So a new council member from San Anselmo was also there. It was a very helpful meeting, and we'll be talking about committee assignments later on. I also had a chance to meet with Supervisor Rodoni regarding, just a sort of a briefing about where things are going and might conceivably go with regard to broadband access. It's a long, long road to hoe, but it's, that was a very helpful briefing. And I think that's about it for town business this month. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Let's see, I also attended the Chamber of Commerce Dinner back in December. Attended the Marin County Council, Council Members and Mayor's Meeting. Attended two Fireboard meetings, and two meetings with the Climate Action Committee. And also attended the Cannabis Panel that we had back in December. And also met today with the Chamber of Commerce, just a kind of a briefing from them to hear what issues are of concern for the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce. And I think that's it then for council reports and comments. And at this time, Garrett, do you have a town manager's report?
Yes, a very brief one. Vice Mayor Kohler suggested I give an update on some various projects. So in terms of storm repairs, I think people noticed that we finished the repair at 300 Tamalpais. I believe we finished repair at 345, for the most part, in Forest. Forest is now open. Madrone, or approximately 92 Madrone, I believe we're about two weeks out or so to that project's completed. I think some of that depends on the weather. For the Scenic and Crest Road pothole repairs, contractor, obviously, never got out to do that work. We're actually talking to other contractors to see if they could do that work. Council may recall, I believe it was back in, was it December or November, you approved a contract to repair Sir Francis Drake, those potholes at around Oak Manor. Contractor wasn't able to get it done in December, and now, really, the schedule's just dependent on weather. So once we hear from the contractor, when he thinks there's a, a break to be able to do it, he can schedule, and then that work will proceed. And I believe that's pretty much the update on the road repairs. Councilmember Reed dressed, kind of gave an update on the trails. I'm not sure if I really need to add anything to that. In terms of, people may notice that we've, contractor has been out there replacing the LED replacement lights of all the residential cobra heads in neighborhoods. Actually, you can see how they are. If you just look right outside of the Women's Club, you could see how the lights actually brighten up the area. We have received some complaints. We're working through those. I believe there's about 50 or so more lights we need to replace. However, the contractor could not proceed until we actually did tree trimming. Our crews have been out there doing tree trimming. It's going to take a little bit of time, but once they do that, then it should be sufficient for the contractor to replace those lights. And one item to note, the color temperature on those lights are 3,000 Kelvin, or Kelvin, Kelvin, Kelvin. Kelvin, Kelvin.
Kelvin.
Kelvin, there we go. Sorry. I don't know why I was doubting myself on that one. Anyway, it's a lower color temperature, and that was per the recommendations of the American Medical Association in terms of what would be a better color. That was the color that the council selected, and so, we're embarking on that process. Terms of other things, let's see, oh, downtown sidewalks. Yes, downtown sidewalks. We've actually pushed that off, the replacement of certain portions of sidewalks, until spring, just because of the weather. We didn't want to do anything during the holidays, and given the weather, we just thought it's better just to wait till spring, till we proceed with that project. And I believe that is my summary on projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you, Mayor? Just one question for Garrett. I think it would be good, since we've had so many road repairs, to do a summary report for consent calendar for the next meeting, and tell us which ones are outstanding as well. Because some have been storm-damaged repairs, others have been just repairs that we've done, and I'm not sure it's clear in my mind, so I think that would be helpful. And I would also like us, at one point, to either do in the town newsletter or as a consent calendar, kind of a summary of our pedestrian trails, what we did last year, what we're working on this year, because there are a lot of people that are interested in that project, and I know even when John was talking, and I'm even on the committee with him, I didn't follow everything. So, I think it'd be good for us to have it in one place, just what we're doing, and thank you, John, for all your hard work on that.
Sure. Yeah, I had a note to myself on the bottom of a different agenda item, but basically, there is a page in the volunteers' website, which is looking to have, you know, various different trail updates on it, and I think to have that all in that location there, or maybe, you know, just linked to from our council.
I think on a newsletter would be good, because I think that was just the bare bones of the plan, but I think having an update with the detail, because not everybody looks at the volunteers' website.
Can't hurt at all. I'd support that also.
Thank you.
Yeah, great idea, is just let people know what we're doing, and it's good to just keep track of things and our accomplishments, so, okay. And then, so now, we're moving on to the, our regular agenda, and the first item is item number 10, and that's to discuss FAQs, or frequently asked questions, to address issues raised during the recent election period. And Garrett, if you would give us a staff report on this item?
Sure. As background, as you may recall, back in December, the council directed staff to prepare frequently asked questions. To return back to January, February, obviously, we're here in January for council discussion. Really, the content of the frequently asked questions was based on those questions and comments that staff received over the past few months. These were things, in some cases, that were posted on Nextdoor and shared with staff. So, really, our attempt is to put together frequently asked questions that can answer multiple questions without having to detail every question, and that's how we came up with this list. It covers such topics as wildfire safety, budget, community outreach, downtown, town manager's salary, infrastructure improvements. And really, the frequently asked questions aren't meant to be a comprehensive approach to try to answer everything out there. I consider it more a point in time. As a matter of practice, what we've done in the past, when issues would come up, we would pair frequently asked questions posted on the website, and so, that way, it's always something new for the future. But I should point out that pretty much all the responses that we put together was all available on the town website. Now, granted, it was either in a staff report or previously prepared frequently asked questions, but the information was there. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting, as the council preferred at your December meeting, was really to get additional questions or comments from the council, many questions and comments from the community, and somewhat have a discussion. Obviously, the final version would incorporate all these comments in, but we wouldn't come back with the final version to council. We would go ahead and just put it on, we would probably let, on Nextdoor, let people know it's available, and then post it on the town website. So, with that, that concludes the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. And any questions for staff from council members? Barbara?
Yeah, a couple of things I may have shared with you. So, one of the things we tend to do with FAQs is, we need to put dates on these. I've also seen that on the Bridges website. We have FAQs, but we don't have dates, so we lose sort of sense of what time things happen. So, let's do dates, and there are certain areas in this report where we may say October 4th, where now, I know it's 2017, but, you know, six months from now, I may not remember what year it was, so let's fix that. But another thing is, there were questions on Nextdoor during the campaign that dealt with sidewalk issues, and I noticed that we kind of put that under road sidewalks. I know that's where we deal with it budgetarily, but I think we should do separately on the sidewalk program, number one. Because I had to respond to this on Nextdoor myself, it would be good to talk about the program where we waive permit fees, and we pay $750 towards your sidewalk, and then also talk about our downtown sidewalks program that we're doing Phase 1 now, and we may propose Phase 2 later on in the year. So, I'd just like to see that as a separate item, but I think this is really helpful, and I do feel that we have, having this in one place is really good, because to think that anybody is, number one, going to be able to find all that information, not, not true, because you kind of have to know when it happened. But, so I think it's great to have it in one place, and I suggest that maybe one of the things we should do in our newsletter in the future is have a little FAQ session, section in each newsletter for questions that come up during the previous quarter or whenever we do that. So, it just may be helpful, because we tend to see these things come up, and then we in the know sort of assume that other people know it, too. Thank you. I know it was a lot of work, even though you pulled it from separate places.
Okay. Anyone else? John?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Garrett, for putting this together. I mean, I must admit, it was me pushing for it. You know, I'm sure I wasn't the only one, but I think it's very helpful for the people, and what I, you know, the thing that I referred to on the bottom is, is the, you know, what is the town doing to, you know, the last question on here, what are we doing to improve the pedestrian trails? And, and my only note there was, add a link to the Fairfax Volunteers Trails Update page, because there's a bunch of information there, as well as maps of them all, and, you know, the map, of course, the status is always changing, needs to be updated even since last week. But, I think, I think it's very helpful for people. I mean, yes, all the information is there, but it helps to have a central spot, which, you know, if they want to learn more, you know, this is excellent, how you've referred to the date and, and agenda item on the various different issues that people can learn more about it. So, thank you very much for putting this together.
Any other comments?
Are we commenting or questioning?
Well, or questions, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, it'll be a question and then a comment later, but in terms of organizing this, I wasn't quite sure, and I know, John, this was something that you were really wanting to see happen, and I supported that entirely, but do these go on, are you thinking on a spot on the website where we, because we have FAQs in many different spots on our website that refer to different things at different times, and obviously adding a date so that we stay oriented, but also, these are very, this is a big potpourri of things, and the sort of hot things that we've been dealing with. So, how do you foresee some way that we organize it, that they stay there, they sort of graduate off of the list, or, I think that's something that we'll need to have a discussion about?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I mean, because this is just going to get more and more voluminous as time goes by.
There's always questions. They need to be answered.
You know, and, you know, and it could be that it's a blog format, you know, and people just scroll down and see, well, what were the frequently asked questions, you know, five years ago, or last year, or whatever it was? You know, and at that point, you've got dates related to it also.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is becoming more of a, this is an ongoing need, that we, that we respond to things as they come up, and especially in the day and age we live in, where there is a plethora of information out there, and easily interpreted, misinterpreted, shared in different ways, that we have a way to really communicate clearly.
Okay.
And we will have situations, we have, we have a website for...
Right, and so I think, I think this discussion is kind of transitioning into, you know, comments or suggestions, as opposed to questions for staff.
You're absolutely right.
Why don't we defer that until we hear a public comment? So, anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item, please come forward, and we're limited to three minutes, and if you can state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Richard Applebaum, 61 Woodland. I'm glad that, I don't know if the FAQ is up yet to the public or not, I haven't seen it, and I look forward to seeing it, because it's something I've been wanting to see for, like, a long time. But as we all know, with questions, who's asking the question, how it's being framed is going to have a lot to do with what information is actually being delivered out there. So, is there going to be the possibility of townsfolk being able to ask other questions or qualify questions of the way they're framed, and give any, is this going to be able to be an iterative or interactive process at all, so that we can get to, get to some things? By the way, I would oppose a blog, because it's a narrative format, and I think the things that make FAQs really effective is that it's just boom, 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 question, answer, question, answer, question, answer. So, so I look forward to seeing an FAQ. I think it's a really, really good thing for the town, but I also think it really needs to be a participatory thing. So, kind of like town government is sort of monitoring social media and sort of picking, you know, taking the temperature and kind of coming up with their list of what are the appropriate questions and how they're being framed. I'd like to know if whether we'll be able to have an opportunity to respond and give feedback and maybe propose other questions. And I would just add, lastly to that, that in some cases, some of these things may lead to, what are all of your positions on certain issues that come out of some of these things? So, I don't know if there's a place on the website for you all to make some statements and go, and here's where we are, this is kind of what we're, this is what we're kind of looking forward to getting accomplished in the next couple of years, and this is sort of what we're driving to, and this is sort of what our sympathies are. So, that will help all of us in town to understand where you all are really coming from and where you really stand on the issues. Thank you.
Frank? Go ahead.
Thank you again. Mayor Frank Egger, 13 Metoway. You know, I read the staff report. I think it's about 12 pages for this item, and the wall property is, is, what happens to that wall property will have a significant impact on our community, and Fairfax folks need to be kept informed as to what's going on up there and the whole process. There are a lot of concerns in the neighborhood, and, you know, we read it, on the one hand, that the developer wants to prepare an environmental impact report, and then we read their environmental analysis that says there's no problem, that the development meets all the Fairfax criteria, policies, zoning, et cetera. So, that, you know, I'm not sure which one it is. On this, commercial highway zoning to central commercial, in effect, if you read the report, it says it's not, it's really have no impact. Well, it will have an impact, and the reason it's going to have an impact is currently for the CH, the Highway Commercial Zone, it requires a conditional use of it for housing above the first floor. And that means it has to go through a planning process in Fairfax with the Planning Commission and probably the Town Council, and, and the town has, has the legal authority to deny an application if it doesn't meet certain criteria. If, if all the CH zone along the Sir Francis Drake and parts of the Center Boulevard and Broadway corridors are rezoned central commercial, they no longer, an applicant no longer needs a conditional use of it, but housing, it becomes housing by right, is what it's implied. And, and, and once you do that, then, then it just really subjects the application to abuse using the state density bonus law. And the fact is, the state density bonus law will allow a developer to go up to four stories, and the town will have no say over that. Now, the staff report says, oh, well, we can negotiate some other, some other issues, other conditions. If you, if you watched what happened in San Anselmo next to the Hub Gas Station, that developer put in two low-income units and got a bonus, like about eight units for the two low. So, the converting CH Highway Commercial along the Sir Francis Drake Center and Broadway corridors, converting that to central commercial will have a significant impact on the community and take away the rights of citizens of Fairfax to really involve themselves in a process, because what they're going to be told is, hey, it's a fait accompli, we're sorry, but you know, we can't stop the development, whereas you could have with a...
Frank, so, that's, that's, the three minutes is up. Is there one last point you wanted to make?
I'm sorry.
Your time is, is up with that. Is there one small point you wanted to make in addition?
No, that, I just, you know, it was 12 pages of, of, of report.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I just wanted to comment on that, on that report.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else that would like to comment on this item, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Kirsten. We live at 3 Roca Drive. It's near the Sir Francis Drake Corridor, and to piggyback on what Frank Egger has said, we're concerned. We're concerned about the CH to CC classification change. We're concerned what that means to our property. We're concerned about how we won't have say in a building if it goes from two stories, how some are now, to four, and we, you know, it's a real red flag for us, so I'd like to stand as saying that, living at 3 Roca, and I hope that the council will really take into consideration how that affects many, many neighbors in the area and impacts us. We've been here for 24 years. We thought it was a certain zone, and now the potential of that changing causes us to rethink where we're living. I think it's very crucial that you consider the feelings and financial situation, that how that impacts the people in that area. Thank you.
Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. Talking about changing CH to CC, coming down from the top, there are, there are laws coming at us that are severely restricting our ability to have a voice in what's happening to our, our town. And keeping this part of town CH gives us at least some control. Turning it into CC gives up control, and I would hope that with the, the forces that are taking a lot of our local control away from us, that we wouldn't give up some of it voluntarily, and I would, I would heartily encourage you all to keep that part of town highway commercial. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak on this? Okay, seeing no further public comment, bring it back to council members for discussion and direction for staff. Barbara?
Just thinking about what Renee was talking about is, I don't think we should continue to grow this one particular document. I suggest that we do something like, once it's finalized, put it in a newsletter, put it out one time, and then, as I suggested, maybe it's not a great suggestion, but I love it myself, is, is that, you know, every newsletter, if there's another, you know, question or questions that come up during that period, we try to just have a brief FAQ, or maybe it's not an FAQ, but we try to cover what that subject is. And I think Garrett's been trying to do that with the newsletter on some of the things that come up. So, I, I look at this as, you know, there were a lot of questions that were raised during the campaign. I think this is a good effort, but I think for us to start doing interactive, even though I hear you, we don't have the staff for that kind of thing, and as far as us putting out our feelings on those, that would be violation of the Brown Act, because we'd be making decisions before things came to us. But I would just suggest that we try to, rather than waiting for a lot of things to boil... boil up, that we, we get this one out there once we've fine-tuned it, and then maybe every now and then, we do another one. But we just sort of deal with questions as they come up, rather than expecting people to be looking for them all the time, because it is tough.
Well, just in response to that, I, I would think that the FAQs that come up front and center when you visit the website would be the things that we are dealing with in that current period. But we, we need to have a place where they're archived in a link fashion so that people can go, oh, what was going on in the second half of 2017, where you go back and say, oh, that's where they were discussing the rezone, or whatever it might be. I, I think we absolutely have to keep them. I mean, it's not that we would get rid of them.
Garrett, you wanted to respond?
Yes, maybe as clarification, our goal was to have under frequently asked questions, whatever it's called, on the bottom of our website, we'd have a link that said frequently asked questions. And it would take you to these lists that we're developing over time. So, it'd be, have to, so there would be this list on it, you could have future ones. I think for the newsletter, it's a good idea, we'll have to figure out how we get those questions and then how we categorize them. I would say unless you just want staff to spend all our time answering questions, interactive approach, that's what would happen. Plus, you would get comments to the comments, and whether comments are a question, or they don't like the way we phrase the question, that would be something...
And then it would be retweeted?
Right, it would be an issue. However, I don't disagree, more information is better, but I would suggest that if we do get questions, and we'll figure that out, that we might re-categorize it and maybe place a couple of questions in the newsletter, I think that's a good idea, we could do that.
Although I do very much like the idea that the public would be generating the questions, and I understand that you, we would have to condense some of them if we're asking the same thing with slightly different words, but I do think that's important because the questions that we believe are, the questions of the community may indeed not be...
I agree. I'm assuming if the community sends 10 questions in about something, to the extent that could be summarized into one question, general category, and we have an answer, that's what we try to do.
Okay, but that's what, the interactive piece is that those questions can be generated from the public.
Sure. Okay. John?
Yeah, or the council the same way. But yeah, I think it's very important to have the questions answered, the questions that people have. And basically, I think it's also important to note, I mean, because there was one comment in the public section where it says, oh, well, the town sees all this stuff on Nextdoor. Actually, the town doesn't see things on Nextdoor. Nextdoor's rules prevent the town, prevent the police, anybody like that, from sitting there on Nextdoor and reading it. Yes, the police put public information bulletins out on there, and so does the town. And that, but that information pretty much goes out in one direction. The town doesn't have the ability to sit there and look at that because they're prevented for by the structure of Nextdoor. The council members can, if we spend, tend to spend all our time doing that, but watch Nextdoor and see what comes up. I mean, I get the digest version myself, just because there's a lot of stuff that comes up. So, that way I can just look, you know, each day, see what's on there. And because we're citizens also, but it's not because of our town function, and basically we are your representatives there, and there's, there's a place for that. I think it's an excellent idea to just to say, okay, these are the questions that are coming up, and put that on the newsletter. And, you know, that can be like, okay, here's the hot issues of whatever this newsletter period is, and be a good way to kind of keep things current. And I guess when I was suggesting the blog format, it was not that, you know, it's a blog, like somebody's just narrating it, it's basically that there is a record and you can go back in time, what you were talking about, Renee. So, I think that that's good, and that Barbara's point about what all the different council members think about any particular issue as it comes up, and, you know, it's, we are definitely prohibited by law from doing that kind of statement. I mean, it's, during a campaign, you can say, well, this is what I believe we should philosophically go for, and that's what campaigns are all about. But we can't be taking positions on issues that are going to be coming up here and saying, this is what I've decided I'm going to vote on in some future thing, and because there's no way you could do that first, because you don't know all the different sides of the issue that's going to be coming up as an issue in front of the council. And that's the main reason why that law exists. So that, you know, if you, if you had said definitively, oh, I'm absolutely for this no matter what, you know, depending on, not depending on any of the circumstances, then, you know, you've already made your mind up. So, anyway, that's, this is a reason for that.
Listen, I understand, I understand the Brown Act. I was not asking anyone to come out and take a specific position on things that'll be voted on or even minutia discussed, but I think there are some things around a general philosophy, a general vision of where they see things going that can be spoken in broad sense that wouldn't anyway conflict with legal situations like that. So, that's really what I'm getting at. And I think what happens is when certain questions come up and they get answered a certain way, it's going to lead to eventually, where's our government leading us right now on this issue or whatever? So, it's inevitably going to happen, so maybe there's some, and I'm sure legal people can give you advice, no, you can't say that, but you could say this. So, that's all I was really getting at.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and kind of general things, I mean, we make statements all the time, generally how we are feeling, but the specifics are different, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. And Bruce, did you have any, any comments you want to make?
So, the, it seems that we've all come to this, to this general idea, and I appreciate the, this first shot at the FAQs, it looks good. I guess where, some of the things that I've come to through the campaign, through talking with people in the run-up to the election, one was that there are some issues that really seem to, seem to get a lot of people upset, and Nextdoor just turned into a real firestorm. And in a one-on-one conversation, they would be settled so often. And so, that really made me feel like, maybe this is, maybe this is idealistic, maybe this is impossible, but maybe there was some succinct way to describe some of these issues that would, that sort of clarified that this isn't some crazy idea that nobody, you know, who in the world would have ever had that idea, but that there's actually a logic to it, it makes sense. So, that's one thing, is just this sort of clarity, and I appreciate the way these, some of these answers are put forth in a clear way. And another thing is sort of being proactive as much as possible. That's not to say that predicting the future is any, is an easy thing, but to the extent that, that an issue can be explained while it's happening, or maybe even a little before it's happening, so that, as opposed to after it becomes a subject of a controversy. So, trying to sort of proactively bring, bring everyone along with whatever the logic is of what all of these complex discussions entail. So, those are just a couple of the, and as far as archiving the frequently asked questions, I'm sure everything will be archived. Michelle will archive everything that we do and every word that we say forever. So, that, it will be archived, I'm not worried about that. But I don't know whether the, I think when a particular topic ceases to be a topic anymore, then it can come off of the FAQs. There's no reason to complicate the FAQs by making it, because that kind of goes against the goal of the first thing I mentioned, which is to try to keep it brief. You know, so just, let's just move them along after they're no longer an issue, they don't need to be up there anymore. So, short, succinct, pretty simple, and trying to be proactive as much as we can.
Okay, so my two cents are two points. I, first, I appreciate the effort that goes into this and assimilating the information, and also citing to where the information is, is also really, really helpful, whether it's, you know, another agency's webpage, or our own webpage, or the minutes and so forth. I like the idea of sort of having fresh or live FAQs somewhere on the webpage, but then archiving them, because I think that's useful. You could just have, you know, past FAQs, and you just have the date, you know, when they were done, and you can click that on, and then you can go through and look at them to your heart's delight, because it is useful for people to kind of get the history of issues and events, and it kind of keeps the institutional memory alive and public. So, I like the idea of archiving the FAQs. One other suggestion to, kind of editorial suggestion, is I would suggest hyperlinking to the specific agenda items if you can. For example, on page eight of the staff report, on the bottom, one of the discussions of about CH to CC review process, it says, go to the September 7th, 2016 council meeting, agenda item 13. If you could do a hyperlink right to that item, I think that would be really helpful, Garrett, wherever that appears. And there's also a reference to that same item further in, in one of the, a little further in the FAQ. So, I think hyperlinking to the exact agenda report or minutes or whatever would, would be a nice little enhancement, too. So, anyways, I think, does that give you some suggestions and ideas for moving forward?
I, I think I got it. Or at least Michelle got it.
So, Mayor, I have a suggestion that we consider moving item eight now because we have Nader Tamamay here, and I know some people want to speak on this issue, who, I'm just wondering if you would consider moving that?
Sure, we have a relatively light agenda, so does anyone have any objection to moving item eight?
No.
Fine.
Okay.
Do I need to make a motion for that? No, okay.
Okay, so, hold on one second, let me reorganize my... Okay, so, so item eight is a receiver report on the status of environmental assessment phase for Meadowway Bridge replacement project, et cetera. And Garrett, if you would do the staff report on this?
Sure, so, kind of the items before you this evening are receiver report on the environmental status. We're asking to approve an alternate design, which is, we're referring to as a half rip rap, half retaining wall concept, and authorize a town manager to amend the contract for additional work needed, an amount of $32,738, and then appropriate the funds. What I thought I would do is provide a little background before Nader Tamamay is here from CIC, and he could provide a little more detail, that's what the PowerPoint is for, but we can load that up after the staff report. And so, maybe this background, you may recall, back in October 2013, council approved the master contract with CIC, and that was for preliminary design, environmental, for the five bridges in town, of which Meadowway was one. The last contract amendment for Meadowway Bridge was back in 2015, and in essence, that was for Phase Two environmental design for that process. 2016, in June 2016, we did conduct a workshop with the residents to talk about the project. And January 2017, the council actually approved the preliminary design based on residents' input, which for a concrete bridge, and then allowed us to actually move forward with the environmental analysis. And at that time, what we indicated is we would report back to the council at a six-month period. Obviously, this is beyond six months, we're at the one-year point, we think it's about another year until we're actually complete. And so, what we thought we would do is kind of provide a brief overview of those three things. So, I'm just going to briefly touch on the issues, and Nader can go into more detail if the council would like. But in terms of the environmental, we did start NEPA and CECLON, NEPA is the federal equivalent of CECLON, we did start that. Some of the studies include plants and animals, which includes threatened or endangered species, cultural and historic resources, noise, air quality, water quality, traffic and floodplain analysis, all of that was required by Caltrans under the process they call the preliminary environmental study. Attached to the staff report, we did indicate that there's actually a change in something we refer to as the area potential impact, effect, I mean, and that's actually changed in the map, and that was just due to the change in the design. Terms of the timing, we believe the cultural resources study will start this month, finish in early spring. We think the noise, air quality, water quality, traffic and floodplain will be completed by late spring. Biological resources studies are expected to be completed in late summer. What does that all mean? It means that we're hoping to have final NEPA or federal clearance in the fall. CECLON documentation is expected to be available for public review in the fall. So, we're really looking at closer to the end of the year till we get to that point of completing this environmental analysis. Now, in terms of the, oh, and one of the things, we have a slide that would, that will actually show you all the federal agencies, what their role is. But in essence, we will need permits from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, we'll need permits from the Army Corps of Engineers, federal agency, and from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So, there's the three, there's other agencies that get the consultant review, and there's other agencies that are allowed to review. So, you have a lot of agencies that are to be commenting on this project. In terms of the redesign of the retaining wall, again, Nader can go into more detail, but in essence, we refer to it as a half rip rap, half retaining wall, and that's replacing the original, what we call a longer retaining wall, I think it was 100 linear feet or so. What CIC did, they came up with this concept, shared it actually with the affected property owner, they like it, then we surveyed the neighborhood just to see what they thought. The responses came back that everyone who responded supported it. So, in your packet, it shows that we received 15 responses, but we've just given you a supplemental to that, that indicates we've received seven more responses since then, for a total of 22 responses that support the new concept. However, you may ask, how do those 22 responses break out? And so, what we did, four of those respond, the 22, come from the same household. So, really, if each household just gets a vote, who responded, then that's really 18 responses. And how that breaks out is, there was one anonymous, 13 with Meadowway addresses, two with Cascade addresses, one with the Canyon address, and one from Larkspur for the 18, and that's just how that breaks out, in case you're interested. In terms of the basic primate benefit of the redesign, we think actually it creates more natural fish and riparian habitat environment in the creek, and it does reduce the amount of hardscaped areas at the creek's surface level. We're not sure on the maintenance costs, we think it might be a modest increase in the future, too difficult to say at this point. CIC's preliminary discussions with Caltrans is they would support such a concept, but obviously it needs to go through their approval process. Our best guess at this time in terms of costs would be the same cost as the original retaining wall. And then lastly, there's a contract amendment of approximately $33,000. What that is, is during the process, there were questions related to right-of-way discrepancies, and we had to conduct additional work to try to resolve those discrepancies, including survey work. I think ultimately what we came up with, some of the discrepancies are still unresolved. However, we believe through a project design, we're sticking in the middle of the right-of-way, it won't impact anybody's property, so to speak, during that timeframe. We don't anticipate encroaching on any residential properties. However, we do anticipate in the future that we will need temporary construction easements as well as some permanent easements for the project. In terms of process, what that means is, once we've finished, finished the environmental phase, we actually then go back to Caltrans to talk about the right-of-way and tempering construction easements. At that time, then, we talked about additional costs that may be involved, and then we amend the contract at that time. I think some of the added costs within that, not only was the surveying costs and CIC's time to resolve the discrepancies, we also had some additional community outreach and other preparation of FAQs. In terms of the financial impact of that $33,000, our share is 11 and 1/2 percent, approximately, so you're talking about maybe $3,800. So, with that, if you'd like, what we could do is maybe Nader can maybe walk you through some of the redesign once I load up the PowerPoint, if that's okay.
Can I just ask one quick question about the right-of-way issue, just to clarify? So, there was a dispute about where the boundary lines were for the street versus some of the property owners. It's my understanding that the, the right-of-way now has been moved so that it's... It's my understanding that the right-of-way now has been moved so that it's, it's clear of the disputed boundary lines by regardless of the, whose survey you're using.
Right, so we're putting everything in the middle of the right-of-way. So there's a buffer zone. And to the extent we can, and I'm pretty sure that's the case, that where there's discrepancies and say in three feet discrepancy on one of the properties, we're not encroaching in that at all, at all during construction or even the final phase of the project. So we're just trying to stay clear, and then we can try to resolve these issues later.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to ask if, while they're loading up, can I take a quick break?
Sure.
My name is Nader Tammany. I'm the principal of California Infrastructure Consultancy. Thank you, Ms. Kohler, for pushing this, advancing this item on the agenda. And thank you, Garrett, for giving such a good introduction to what's been happening since last time I was before you. So really, Garrett did a fantastic job of covering what's been going on in terms of environmental since last year. About this time, we got your approval to move ahead with the concept, and that's when the environmental studies began in earnest. As Garrett mentioned, there are a plethora of studies, noise, cultural, environmental, I mean fauna and flora, as well as traffic, construction noise, dust. All those impacts are being currently studied, and Caltrans will actually be reviewing the NEPA document. They're the FHWA steward of the project, since the funding is federal and from FHWA. So they are, they will be reviewing the environmental document and issuing approval for that. At the same time, the CEQA document rides, piggybacks on a lot of the same studies with California-specific studies also undertaken to fulfill CEQA requirements. And as Garrett mentioned, both of those documents will be in draft form and submitted CEQA for local circulation and comment for one month in the fall, and Caltrans will be reviewing the NEPA document for the federal government. In terms of agencies, again, there is a multitude of agencies that will be overseeing the process, both federal and state agencies, beginning with Caltrans and FHWA themselves, where the funding comes from and is administered.
Nader, do you think you could maybe, when you, instead of using acronyms, FHWA is that Fish and Wildlife?
I'm sorry. No, that's Federal Highway Administration.
Okay.
Sorry.
It would just be helpful for all of us.
I just take those for granted. Yes.
Nader, could I make just a technical suggestion?
Yes, sir.
If you could point the microphone more horizontal, as long as it picks up your voice. Unfortunately, there's a speaker right above you, and if the microphone's pointed straight up, it tends to feed back. So if you could find the sweet spot, because it was feeding back just a little bit.
How's this? Is this any better?
Maybe tilt it up just a little higher. That, try that.
Do I come across?
Yeah, that reduces the feedback. It's easier to hear all the.
Okay, well, please let me know if it's not comfortable or if it's not right. Again, so if this is coming out. So again, in terms of the documents going to these different agencies, US Army Corps of Engineers, NOAA Fisheries, again, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, US Fish and Wildlife, all of these agencies, Regional Water Quality Control, will have a consulting role on these documents. In other words, consulting means they are going to be reviewing these and directing us in one direction or the other, and making sure that we follow the rules. And then, as Garrett mentioned, three agencies are involved in the permitting process at the end of this. These are, these are state agencies that would be, state and federal agencies that would actually issue, after all the studies are done, we actually have to go apply for the permits in a six-month process or so. The actual permits, which are specific, they have all the conditions written into them that need to be followed in construction, and those permits need to be followed very closely during construction. Forward again. So since last year, again, we promised that we'd come back and give an update, and while the environmental documents are being prepared, the studies are being done, we're doing a little bit of a low-burn design, preliminary design, so that, so that we can actually support questions that come up during the environmental process. And one of those items that, again, we put before you last year as part of the bridge project was a retaining wall that's connected to the southwest corner of the bridge that is in the direct line of hit from the flows. In other words, if we don't have that protection in that part of the creek, the flows are currently eroding the embankment, and eventually it would go behind the bridge abutment and essentially undermine the road that leads to the bridge and go through number one Meadowway property, the back, where there is a yard and pool. So that's kind of the extreme situation that we're trying to prevent with this wall that's, again, at one of the corners. The bridge is on an S curve, if you recall, and it's not the most ideal location to put a bridge, because again, the waters hit one side, one abutment, they bounce with their velocity during the high speed to the other side, the road to the other side. So it's a highly erosion and scour-prone location in the creek. So we had to put these fortifications, wing walls and retaining walls to protect both the embankment and the bridge. So there was a long retaining wall resulted at that southwest corner. Since last year, we went back and decided to take a look at that and see how we can break that up, how we can break up the concrete, you know, the concrete essentially face and surface at the creek level. And what we did was, was kept part of the wall that's still connected to the bridge, but moved the rest of the wall up on the slope, and where that space was vacated, we're fortifying with a system that's called log root wad revetment. And what that is, is that when the embankment is excavated to be put back properly, there's a grid of big logs, grid work of big logs that get put down on the creek bed, and then you throw big boulders in between them. So what happens is, and then you top it with soil. So what happens is this combination of grid of logs and large boulders creates stability, embankment stability, and by topping it with soil and also seeding through the rock and these logs, you create vegetation and you create further stability and a riparian, riparian environment on the bank itself. And what, again, the fish like plants, they like shade, they like the cooler pools. A pool is created, this is a cross-section of that embankment. You can see the, there's a pool and greenery and shade that the fish still head is, comes up the creek, and this is a fish habitat. So the whole 100 feet or so of frontage of the wall, part of it previously was, we had created fish pools, and now we've extended that all the way to the end of where the wall used to be. Now it's half-wall, half this revetment. Let's see if, I guess this is where, there you go. So I should have referred to this picture earlier. This is how it was last year when we presented it to you. The bridge is on the right side of this picture, and this is the wall. And this wall was, was the back of it, the slope behind it was, it would have been, again, landscaped and with native, native plants and willows and trees, trees, shrubs and vines. Is it still?
I'll just adjust it while you're speaking.
How's that?
Yeah, go ahead, just keep talking. There you go.
So this is how it was in, we call this the 2017 project.
Go back. Oh, did it? Did it turn out?
I'm not sure.
Oh, okay, so, so that's the, that's the old one, so maybe it's loading.
Yeah.
There you go. So again, the bridge abutment is on the right-hand side. We've taken that wall, cut it to about 40%, 40, 45% of what it was, and then moved the rest of it up the slope where the neighbor has a fence right now. And essentially, this will sit right under the fence. The fence will be replaced and put on top of that. And in front of the wall, and in front of both walls will be, again, planted and vegetated with native riparian shrubs, vines and trees, and of course, with the revetment in the creek itself. We've extended the fish habitat.
Nader, you know, one thing that I'm a little confused on is...
Go back to that.
We need a picture that shows the bridge and where the revetment is.
Okay.
Because I can't see that.
So these...
It's not on this.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So let's go to the next slide, actually. That's a good one for Ms. Kohler to, next one up, right. Just taking his thinking, so the one after that.
There's a laser pointer, did you see?
Yeah, yeah, I, actually, so we need the next slide, please. Yeah. Yeah, I noticed that it was, there you go. So there you go. So this is Meadowway, and here's the bridge. And the abutment I was talking about is in this area, and the wall kind of wraps around and used to be all of this. Now the wall is split up, some of it comes up to about this far, and the rest of it is up here. And in between, there is the vegetation. And the revetment, this is the, essentially, this is all the fish habitat area.
So show me where the revetment is.
The revetment is in this area, right here.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, the, we used, we had the fish pools and the fish habitat in 2017, limited to this area. Now it's extended to all of this. So the, you know, the log revetment part begins from there and comes to here. This is just a wall and then a pool in front of it. So that's the combination that we're talking about. Is that, does that answer?
Yeah, how long is the revetment?
So the revetment is about 55 feet or so long.
Okay, and how long is, I mean, I'm kind of comparing, how long is the wall that's before, is that maybe like 70 feet or so?
That's less than that. It's about 45 to 50 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, so it starts, starts here, comes to about here. So it's about 40, 45% of the overall length is this wall with a pool in front of it, and then the rest of it is actually open, open slope. So this is, so when we talk about revetment, and so we're looking at a natural, natural bank that comes all the way down to the creek. Below the soil that you see on the surface is this, these big boulders and this grid of big logs.
Okay.
And it's topped with those boulders and then soil, and then planted over with the trees and so on.
And just one more question, since you're on this. I know that the community works very interested in access to creek, and I know we're not going to have a formal path.
Right.
Because of accessibility, but could you show me where the path is?
So the path is this red dashed line, start from Meadowway, kind of switch back your way down.
Okay.
Come all the way down. And we did ask the resident if they were, their property comes all the way down to the creek to, you know, officially, the property line is here, so we had to speak with the Davis Thompson family. By the way, one of those votes that was addressed on Cascade Drive is them. Their official address is Cascade Drive, but they are Meadowway. They're a big stakeholders in this, and that's the Davis Thompson family.
So basically, we, we talked to the people who would provide access, but we're providing a pedestrian, a way for the people that live there to be able to still get down to the creek, which people wanted to do.
Precisely. And the way we're doing this is we're not designating this as a path or trail. What our landscape architects would do is just provide a bare path that's not going to be planted and have trees, just a narrow, informal path that is not, you know, so they're not going to be trampling on.
Okay, great, thank you.
Could you point the fence line that you were talking about?
The fence line is, whoops, there I go again. So let me, sorry. There you go. So, there you go. The fence line currently is right up there, and so what we're doing is, is we're putting, so instead of having a wall, we push the wall up there, and we're replacing that redwood fence right on top of the wall. So their property, their usable property stays where it was, their fence stays where it was. We're taking it out, putting the wall in there to essentially bring the slopes down at a stable slope. Right now, it's a real hodgepodge and unstable, eroding embankment that we're fixing this way. So, let's see if Garrett had some more slides here for me after this. Again, there you go. So again, this is kind of a 2017 fish habitat area was all of this. So essentially, what our geomorphologist does is they create, you know, they push the soil up, they create little mounds, and in the process, you're creating some pools and holes. So, you know, with the mounds and the depth that you've created, you've created a fish habitat that is, again, planted with willows and vegetation that the fish like in the creek. So what we did, we extend, we will be extending that fish habitat to this area as well. We didn't have a chance to redo our exhibit, so I just put text there for the extension of the fish habitat.
So would there be any root wads on that right-hand side?
No, no, that area is, is just strictly, strictly, the fish habitat is created through the pools and the mounds.
To the natural scouring? I mean, it tends to scour there now, doesn't it?
Correct. So if we, yeah, go back, there you go. So really, when we talk about, you know, the S curve, this is the S curve, we're talking about water coming, you know, it flows north actually in this area. So water comes in, it hits this area, it just, you know, churns the soil, the embankment up, and then bounces in this area to this side and, you know, erodes this area, and it's evident, quite evident, there's a big hole under the current existing bridge abutment in that area.
Right now, it's quite, it's undermining the bridge, which is having a problem.
Correct. And what we're doing is, so we have, you know, little abutment and wing walls on the bridge here, the same thing, the wing wall begins here, and of course, you know, becomes an abutment and a retaining wall. All of these in front, the foundations of the bridge and these walls are protected with riprap, rock riprap. This is rock, half-ton, quarter-ton to half-ton that is dropped on the foundations. Then again, it's topped with the natural river soil, about three feet of natural soil. So when you, so essentially, we're creating a soil trough through this area. Fish, they don't like rock, they like soil. So it's kind of a soil trough that the fish travel through.
I mean, that's why I was asking about the root wads, just because that seems pretty, I mean, it's rough, it's not a hard, hardscape like concrete or riprap.
It is not. In fact, what you will see at the end of the process is the plants, some ends of the logs sticking out. And actually, we had a photo of that, I don't know if Garrett put that in the, didn't include it. There's... There's, there's, there's actually, Lagunitas Bridge that was replaced. It's the same geomorphologist, the same designer that created a, it's not a revetment per se like this, but it's a little lower key than this, and downstream, just at the bridge, just on downstream of it, he created this natural pool with logs and, and vegetation, and it looks really serene and beautiful, right there in our own backyard, Lagunitas in Ross. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Most welcome. So is there, I think that concludes...
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Nader, just show me with the pointer, show me the retaining walls, everywhere the retaining walls would be.
Okay. So if you consider the, the bridge abutments, retaining walls, they're look, they look the same, so the, you know, bridge abut, abut, I'm sorry, bridge abutments would be right here, and then they are connected to a wall. So this is the wall on this side. There is a short little wall right here.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. It just flipped, but...
Yeah.
I had my eyes down because I was writing.
Sorry.
Can we go back to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, so bridge abutment, straight wall, and then a little wing wall that connects up with an existing wall right here, so we're closing this up. Little wing wall here, little wall here.
Okay.
These are considered wing walls. And then this, the bridge abutment, again, on this side, this, this is the abutment, little wall here, and then it continues, comes to about here, we have this wall. And then the wall that we moved up, the rest of the wall that we moved up the slope is about right there.
Okay. Just one quick question. Going back to the wall that's, with all those trees, that's, at least on the thing, it looks like to me it's about forty feet or something. Trace the, the longest one on that side.
The longest one?
No, no, no. Go back down. There.
Oh.
Where is the wall there?
The wall is right at the edge of the creek.
And it's about forty feet, right?
It's about forty-five feet or so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. I see that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That helps.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I had a couple real quick ones.
Yes, ma'am.
On the slide that says aquatic and riparian habitat enhancement, this one here...
Yeah.
If you could bring that up on the...
Let me see. I think that was after this.
...PowerPoint for people watching at home.
There you go.
Yeah, that one. So that depicts an area that would have a pool of water for the fish, and it shows an elevation, maybe it's, it looks like it's about two or three feet deep. And my question is, is there water in that pool year round?
I've seen the creek dried up, bone dry in the summer. So, no, there won't be, that, in the middle of the summer, you wouldn't see a drop of water coming through in a typical year.
Okay. And when do the fish, I mean, would the fish be able to use that for spawning before it dries up?
Yes. So the fish season, in fact, the construction season is April fifteenth through October fifteenth. Anything outside of that is spawning and, and migration, fish migration time, and that's when you, you know, winter, winter and spring months, you see the most amount of water in the creek.
And then, I like the, the concept of the root wads. It's kind of nice to use actual natural materials and recreate that.
Yeah.
But do those root wads ever wear out or need replacing just from, you know, the erosion of the creek?
The, the beauty of that is that, again, they're interlaid with, with big boulders and rock, and then topped with soil. So the nature of such structure, if you want to call it that, is that over time, it, as, as things, things become old and, and, you know, yeah, everything gets, you know, eventually everything wears out, the soil migrates into the empty soil, empty or voided areas and fills, fills the gap. And so what Garrett mentioned about maintenance is, is keeping an eye on, you know, over the decades, we're not talking about next year or two years from now, but over the decades, this, this structure is made to last seventy-five to a hundred, the overall project is, is made to last between seventy-five, the official life for any, any structure is fifty years, but in reality, we're looking at seventy-five to a hundred years of useful life.
Right. And the, the root wads, do they, they do a service of protecting the wall from getting scoured out, too?
The root wad is actually in a separate area from, from the wall. So again, looking at this picture, the wall, let's say that that starts from the, from the bridge abutment and comes to about here, this portion sits on its own foundation and, and in fact, deep foundations, i.e. piles. This whole system, the foundations and the piles are about six feet or so below the creek bed. Then it gets topped with, with boulders, again, rock riprap, and then topped with the three feet of the riverbed materials. So over time, as, as the river moves and sediment transports, it, you know, things move away, then get put back in, but there's, there's ample, six feet of protection, three feet of soil and three feet of rock in front of the foundations. The root, what the root wad allows us to do is, is have steeper, steeper slopes, if you will, that are also environmentally beneficial.
But there's not a concern that eventually, as the root wad wears out, just by, you know, wood eventually rots in the forests of the creek, that that is going to be a structural vulnerability?
The main thing is that we're not depending on, on these logs for, essentially, for, to, to fill the space or fill the void. The void is filled with large boulders. This, these rock, these logs are in a grid shape, and then in, in the middle of the grid, you know, the grid is set on the bottom of the creek essentially. So, you know, the, to illustrate, this area would be all excavated, and then the grid would be series of logs this way and series of logs this way, just in perpendicular direction to each other. And then large boulders dropped in between these logs. So it locks the rock, the logs, and, and the rock is what gives the embankment its stability and, and strength.
Thank you. Any other questions or, okay, so then at this time, we'll open it up to public comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
While we're waiting for public comment, if you're, you may recall the Pastore Bridge Project, that's a root, root wad and boulder type setup. So if you wanted to see an example, just go to Pastore Bank Stabilization Project, it's right there.
Great.
Is it ready for public comment?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors.
Go ahead.
And Frank Agar, thirteen minutes away. The look, the feel, the scale and the character of Meadowway is defined by the bridge and the native trees of growth. There are twenty-nine homes on Meadowway and seventy-six hundred people live at Fairfax. Public access is really important. This is the only public access between Bollinas Road and the Elliott Nature Reserve in the Cascade Canyon. This public access has been there for at least eighty years that I know of. This would be the third bridge built at Meadowway. The drawing that showed us some kind of a trail maybe crossing private property, that's truly not much public access. I think there has to be an accessway defined. If it's on private property, that accessway has to be deeded to the town and easement has to be given to the town to allow the public to go up and down. How we got here? You know, it's, early on, there was, there was a poll done of Meadowway residents, and sixty-one percent of the respondents to a poll voted for a concrete bridge. It was a concrete bridge versus wood bridge versus a steel drop-in bridge. I had, I made a Public Records Act request of the town to see who actually voted, how, how these votes came down. Since there were, there's twenty-nine homes on Meadowway, and at one point, thirty-six votes were cast, so I made a Public Records Act request. And, and the results that I received from the town clerk was that they only, they only identified six of the, of the thirty-six respondents as Meadowway residents. May have been more, but only six were identified in that poll. And, and the council used that poll, it said sixty-one percent of the respondents supported the concrete bridge, and, and so that kind of got us to where we are today. The goal, this bridge is going to be twenty-three, twenty-three feet wide, but we haven't seen how, how the pavement is laid out. Is it, is it seventeen feet for traffic and six feet for pedestrians, or is it eighteen feet for traffic and five feet for pedestrians? We don't know any of that. To give you an example, the Golden Gate Bridge has two lanes that are nine and a half feet in width. One nine and a half foot lane on the Golden Gate Bridge handles nineteen thousand, six hundred and five cars per day. This proposal is just way overkill for a little Meadowway and the twenty-nine homes that it serves. What we need to see is an overhead photo and someone sketching exactly where, where the bridge is, where the accessway is, where the walls are, where the fences are, where the riprap is. You know, it would be very helpful for everyone to be able to see it. You know, you could get an overhead shot either with a drone or, or, or maybe Google, Google Earth, and then actually lay in exactly where all the improvements are going to The contractor ought to mark off a Meadowway with some paint so we can actually see the layout, where it actually goes, stakes in the ground and stakes in the creek, et cetera. You know, what's interesting, it talks about, I don't know how, what's going to happen to the existing femal, femal riprap wall that was put in there years ago. It hasn't even been mentioned. Also, the, the property at three thirty-three Cascade, which is the, the right-hand corner house coming into Meadow from Cascade Drive, in the, in the early sixties, a retaining wall was put in there, and the contractor hasn't mentioned. I don't know if that retaining wall is coming out and a new revetment's going in or what. On the right-of-way issue, the right-of-way, the drawings show the right-of-way extending onto, into private property. And, and here's the issue, and I've mentioned it at Council meeting before, the north and south sides of Meadowway were subdivided years and years ago, and, and that, those subdivisions showed up on separate assessor parcel maps. Generally, whereas a neighborhood, there's one assessor parcel map and it shows the subdivision, and you, and you can see where the, if there's a forty-foot right-of-way or whatever it is. That's not how Meadowway was subdivided, two separate assessor parcel maps. And no one put them together to see if there really is forty feet. When I was on the council, I looked for a deed or an easement that, that, that set forth the forty-foot Meadowway right-of-way. I could never find it. You know, I've gone back to the minutes from day one when Town Fairfax Incorporated, and I specifically looked for the time that the Fairfax, Town of Fairfax, and I tell you, for a while it was the city of Fairfax, when Fairfax accepted Meadowway as a public right-of-way. And I can't find it. And I cannot find the easement and, and the, and the property description of Meadowway that, that would tell us whether or not that public right-of-way is, is where it says it is. Some years ago, a neighbor wanted to expand their footprint on their property, and, and they, they said, I was encroaching on their property, I had moved my fence over. I had never moved the fence over. It was there when I bought the house. We bought the house in nineteen sixty-two. But anyway, the town said, well, okay, that could be. Please provide us a survey. So that owner provided a survey. The survey showed that my fence line, the front fence line and the fence line between my property and their property is exactly right, right on the money. It is perfect. I know exactly where the pins are in the ground. They're covered over, but I know where they are. And so that survey showed my fence lines, front and side, being absolutely right on.
Going on about five minutes if you...
Okay, sure.
Just make a couple more points or summarize.
Yeah, I, I think you should go a little slower on this. There's just an awful lot of questions that need to be answered, and I just, I just want to say thank you for listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. I agree with Frank that if, that the public access to the creek needs to be protected in a formal way. The Thompsons are really nice, generous people. If they ever sell their property and someone else buys it and decides that they don't want people traipsing down through their property onto the creek, then we lose our access. So I think that needs to be formalized legally. And I live five houses up from Meadowway, and this seems like a done deal. And I've been hearing that there were surveys, there were community workshops, and I received no notice, and I'm wondering how I missed out on that, whether the community involvement was restricted to only the people with Meadowway addresses. And I think it would, it would improve communications if people were brought into the process before the deal was done. I know there's a bridge that's being replaced in Lagunitas, the little green bridge, the little steel bridge that goes across the creek. And there's a lot of advertisement about community workshops as to who wants what, what's a possibility, and I don't see that any of that happened in this process. So I, I think it should be slowed down, too.
Hello. I'm hearing the need for a drone, and I have a family member who has one with photographic capability, so they'd be happy to, I'm sure, donate time to that if you'd like it. Okay?
Anyone else from the comment, or anyone else from the public care to comment? Okay. Seeing none, let's bring it back to the council for discussion. Barbara, go ahead.
Yeah. So I, I do like the changes to the design, the modest changes. I think that'll make it more natural. But I, there were a couple of things that were raised that maybe we need to work on this as we go through the process, but the idea of getting a specific legal easement for that access is really critical. And Garrett, you weren't here, Nader wasn't around when we ended up having a big problem within easement to the Egger Grove, and the town spent a significant amount of money in litigation and lost. And it was, we had the public right-of-way there, and so I think that's really critical. It's true, whoever lives there could change their mind, even nice people could decide they don't want people tromping on their property. So I think that's a critical component. I also do like the idea of the, from the top, showing all these features, because you can also get, from my questions, that I was trying to visualize some of the things. So I think that would be helpful. We can probably, I'm sure Nader's company has a drone with photo capability, but I think that's great if we need one. But, you know, a photo overlaying. But I, I feel that the changes to the design are modest, they're a good idea. I think it's helpful that we're refining things a little more as we go through the process, and I also feel comfortable with the number of agencies and the type of agencies involved in this process that I know we have a goal of doing everything environmentally appropriately, appropriately. appropriately, appropriately as well as engineering appropriately. But, um, so I'm feeling very supportive of moving forward, but I do feel that the easement and getting a on-the-top overlaying picture will help us in future workshops. And I know many of us attended those workshops, including a lot of folks from Meadow Way. So, thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Of course.
Um, so what is the state of the, what is the status of the conversation with the Davis Thompsons about that access trail?
So I, I think maybe what I can is elaborate a little bit because this is a great example of the public process that we started back in 2013. We had some workshops, we had lots of emails, we invited the community to sign up on the Fairfax Bridges website that provide them updates on projects. And so, but the longer things continue and the longer you have a gap, everyone's, they get comments of, well, I've never heard about it. Okay, fair enough. But part of that is, and I, I think I need to clarify, in the last survey that we did, it was anonymous, maybe six or seven residents, I believe, did actually state their name, but it was open to whoever wanted to take the survey. And one of the criticisms we received was, well, we don't know who voted for it, plus the people outside the area. So we should just limit it to Meadow Way residents. And so that's what we tried to do this time, is the people that were directly impacted, survey them on what they thought about this new design. Secondly, on the bridge project, we have a consolidated list of 34 frequently asked questions as well as every iteration of every design and concept that we put out to the neighborhood. Within that, it describes the reason for the size of the bridge because if you want federal highway funding, it has to be of a minimum size. Caltrans did agree after we discussed an appeal with them that it could be one lane. It doesn't have to be two lanes, it could be one lane, but it has to be of a certain size if you want to qualify for funding. So I think that's important to point, point out that we spent since 2013, it's 2017, four years working on this project. We have another year's worth before we can even get to the point of environmental clearance, which then we move in construction drawings and you're talking a project, if we're lucky, that we could start maybe two years from now. And it's a two-year project because you can only build between April and October. So I'm just pointing out, we've had a lot of time, we've had a lot of input. I get it, it's been a while, we can get the information. But as you can tell, I think it's important that we point that out, that we're not doing this in a vacuum. Now, to really answer your question, I apologize for digressing, but to answer your question on the public easement is, Caltrans won't pay for that. Uh, there's no access at this time at that property. If you look at it, it's pretty much a cliff with all the blackberry bushes. The access is actually on the other side of the bridges where people access the creek right now. What we're doing is we're creating this informal access, but that easement is not anything that Caltrans will pay for or even approve if you were to build something more specific with public access. I don't have a problem going and talking to Davis, uh, to Davis Thompson and Davis about the concept if we were to get some type of public easement, what that would take. Um, and so we can do that, but I think we need to point out that that's not funded, it's not something that will be funded by Caltrans and they specifically have pointed that out to us already, that that's not anything that they're going to fund, that's not the purpose of the project and there's no easement there now. And the easement, the access to the creek is on the other side. But we can go ahead and explore that and see how far along we can get in that discussion. I, I think, I just want to point out, let's not lose the concept of we're making things better. The access on the other side will still be there, but we're making this better. So it's easy, I think, to come in, offer comments and it's okay to, to offer comments and say how things could be approved, that's fine. But I want to point out that these are things that we have answered before for the public so they know I would advise them to go to the Bridges projects to get those answers. We can definitely proceed and try to see how far along in that discussion we can get with Thompson, Davis. I, I, I don't know, obviously their projects, their properties benefiting greatly from these improvements, but a public easement on their property, uh, we'll have to see how far along we get.
So the, just one question, so the access on the other side, whose property is that on?
That's Wasserman's property, but right now that's informal access.
That, that's incredibly informal access that I've been accessing for 22 years and it, it's in better shape than it used to be, but it is absolutely informal and most people cannot access that. My kids can and you gotta hang on to things, some things have been put in, but it's all grassroots, like, you know-
Pretty steep.
-for the blackberry pickers.
It's an adventure for a 10-year-old, but it's a challenge for-
I love it, but I, and I'll be sad to all be missing the blackberries, but it, there is no formal-
But, so that's not-
Or informal access there.
That's not going to go away with, with these, uh, construction, um, plans?
May I then, uh, address the council on, on, uh, the points that were raised? So, uh, by the way, on this drawing, the red lines show property lines. These are all the property lines that we're talking about. Uh, so this is the, uh, Thompson Davis property, this is Mr. Wasserman's, uh, the Wasserman property, Binnick and, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Egger's property here and, and Horton family here. So as you notice, uh, there are a couple of things that I need to bring up. Uh, the bridge, as we said, is right in the middle of, uh, will be right in the middle of the right-of-way. So really, the, the, what was in dispute was by Mr. Wasserman. He says that his property comes out some three, four feet further into Meadow Way. So this, this area here, uh, we've decided that we're going to, uh, orange fence that area during construction, not even let the contractors, uh, trucks and cars park in that area. So we're nowhere near anyone's, encroaching on anyone's, anyone's property. The current access to the creek, as you noticed, is a precarious, uh, path in this area. We're still crossing private property. Uh, as you notice, the bridge is hemmed in by essentially private property on all four sides. So there is really no formal way to gain access to the creek on, uh, unless you traipse on someone else's property. Uh, I also wanted to mention that the request for aerial drone and, we actually, uh, surveyed this and we aerially shot this with, with high-definition cameras. So we have all kinds of photos, uh, plans, this very plan that you see here overlaid on top of aerial photos. We've had those for, uh, three years, uh, ever since we started the website. They've been posted and have been existing on the website with exact, precise, um, layout of, of the improvements.
Are they still on the website?
They certainly are.
Okay.
Yes, they are.
And could the, could you change them enough to show the revetment?
Uh, yes, we could, we could now, uh, after this, this process and acceptance of that, we could certainly, uh, uh, lay out the, the area of revetment on, on the aerial photo, certainly.
So, Nadir, um, then all of that cement infrastructure on the Wasserman's property that, where the current access going down to the creek, there's no plans to remove that as part of this bridge plan?
What, um-
Will that all be in fact-
That area is also highly eroding. Uh, it's, it's, again, it's, it's a, uh-
Well, it's a yes or no question. I mean, do the plans call for removal of it or leaving it in place?
We're putting, uh, we're putting a, a wall here, uh, so folks can still go behind this wall and get in that creek. They can still use that area to go down in the creek because, uh, the, the private property fence is going to be far enough where person, persons can, can be between this, this wing wall that I mentioned earlier and, and Mr. Wasserman's, uh, fence to get down to the creek. Uh, we're not making the slopes any steeper, uh, they're actually becoming, uh, less steep in this process to make him stable. So I believe access can still be made, uh, in this area, but this is a far, far less steep and, and gradual-
Right, okay.
-slope down on this side.
Any, any other-
I do have something else.
Yeah, go ahead.
So as I'm listening to the public and asking for things to slow down, um, I'm recalling that over these years, we've had a couple of times where there's been repairs that have been required. And so my question is, when those repairs are required and we're in this process, one, how much has been spent on repairs and two, how, how is that done? How's that money covered? Is it through the grant? And, um, how, how does that work? Because I am concerned that by the time that's already been spent and then potentially more time, that we run into greater cost to, to the town.
So the, the answer is we spent about $90,000 on two repairs to the bridge. That is not reimbursed by the bridge program or any program that Caltrans has, so we actually funded that out of our capital funds or our general fund. Um, pretty much our discussion with Caltrans is, when they looked at the improvements is, we are hoping those improvements will last until we can replace the bridge. That was the game plan. If you think back from when we started, the game plan was replace the bridge before we had to put substantial capital into repairing it so it can last until you can replace it. So that's the latest of where we're at. The good news was that off the latest bridge inspection report, Caltrans actually increased the weight load that could be on the bridge so we could have fire trucks and garbage trucks, well, garbage trucks are on there, but we could have the type three engines go across the bridge, or type one engines, I should say. So I believe that's what we did, but Caltrans also recognizes that's not going to last forever, so at some point we do need to replace the bridge.
Any other questions or comments up here? Uh, Garrett, I had a couple of questions. Um, the, uh, how, how is the, the bridge going to be designated? Is it going to be two lanes, one lane, a pedestrian lane? Has that been-
It's, what will happen, it, it's one lane. It'll be one lane of traffic, um, and then we could stripe it any way we like, but we committed to only making it one lane of traffic in Caltrans.
And how, how wide is that lane?
It's a 12-foot, 12-foot, uh, 12-foot lane.
Uh, if you could use, use a microphone, yeah.
So it, uh, it's, if I recall, it's a 12-foot lane. We have a two-foot buffer and a five-foot sidewalk all on the bridge. So if I recall, seven-
And then railings.
I'm sorry? And then railings, yes.
Is that sort of the current regulations for Caltrans for-
That's the minimal, the, the minimal width that they would have approved. In fact, they came out and said, we will not accept a bridge rail, face of rail to face of rail that's less than 19 feet. And that's, that's, uh, what, uh, we divided the, the space in two, 12-foot, 2-foot and 5.
And then, um, on sort of some notice issues, um, is it, I think it is a good idea to maybe paint the road, uh, to show exactly where that, um, where the proposed bridge alignment is going to be. I think that would be helpful for the neighbors. Um, is there any reason why we can't do that, um, in the interim?
Well, that's just an added cost that the city, the town would have to bear.
Can a spray paint and an hour of labor to just go out and mark it?
I mean, we could do it. We did something like that a while back when we were showing with a possible right-of-way when we were talking to the property owners. Sure, we could do that again.
Yeah, and maybe, and stake out just where the, you know, if it's on, on the land where, uh, you know, where the, the bridge would be. I think that would be helpful.
I, I guess just for the record, uh, all the property owners that we've spoken to are pretty aware of where everything is, is going, but we can do it again.
Yeah, and then also in terms of notice to neighbors about bridges, is that different than for, you know, if someone wants to do an add-on to their house and it gets mailed out because it's public works?
At this point, what we've done is we have an email list. Um, you know, maybe a while back, I forget, we might've done notices or signage, but at this point, anyone who signed up, who's interested in any of the bridges receives email updates. So we have not mailed anything out to the whole area. We've done, done emails, I think in the past we might've used next door or something and that's our preferred approach.
I think when we started this in 2013, it was the classic mail-out within a certain distance of where the bridge was. When the first workshop was held-
That's probably true.
There was no next door at that point for the town.
Okay, so no next door. We probably just did mailings and signage.
I mean, shouldn't we continue to do mailings for a, a project like this?
Uh, well, it depends on where you are at a certain stage. If you're saying every next workshop or any time it's on council, mail it out, then I would ask, are we asking for the whole Cascade neighborhood or we're just 500 feet? It's additional work. Normally what we've done is we've tried to get all the interest parties sign up on the email list, which is, I don't know how many are on there, 80 or 100 people are on the email list. But if you're saying you prefer that, we can do it, it's just extra time and cost.
Yeah, I, I think it should be, you know, mailed out, just like if it were, you know, anytime there's a, um, public action, uh, that the town's taking-
Peter, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry, but, but we have five bridges that are being, that are being worked on and I'm thinking about just adding, when there's 100 people or 80 people already on the email list and there's access to a website, it's above and beyond what we've done for about any other project. So I feel as though we need to look at how we're directing staff and time that's required to do this kind of special outreach.
I have a suggestion that, not necessarily when it comes to the council, but if we do another workshop, that might be the time rather than, you know, treating it like you would a, a planning project. I, I hear what Renee is saying and we have started this some time ago, so I think if we do a new workshop, that's the time to do that kind of mail-out.
Okay, yeah. So, um, okay, those are my questions and my, my general comments. Um, I really would like to see, uh, you know, Nadir is talking about this, uh, public access on the, across a private property, which, um, you know, it, it's a great idea, but I, I would like to see if we can actually obtain that because it would be a real benefit to the community, um, at least, uh, discuss that, uh, with the property owners. I was, you know, we vote, when we voted on this to approve the, the concrete design, I actually was opposed to that. I thought we should, and, and I came into the process a little late, I, I thought we should look into other alternatives, but we have kind of decided to go down this route of the concrete bridge. So, um, that, you know, that, we've crossed that Rubicon, so to speak, so, uh, you know, I, I think the, this work is a, it's an improvement over what was, um, what we approved before. So I'm, I'm glad to see that. I'm glad to see a little bit more, uh, sensitivity, uh, to the creek habitat. And I think these enhancements will help, um, uh, the, the fish out. Um, I, I think, you know, bigger picture, I think probably less expensive alternatives could have been chosen and weren't, but we've, you know, we're embarking on this path. So this is, it, it's a welcome improvement over that design. But I, I would like to see discussions, uh, with the neighbors about obtaining that access. Um, and I, I think it would be good just to, uh, paint the outline of where, you know, the bridge alignment would be with the right-of-way. Yeah, I-
Any other comments or?
Yeah, I guess, I would concur. I, I think it's important to have the public access as much as we can, you know, have that nailed down for the future. Um, you know, whether it's an agreement with that property owner or, or, or whatever it is, I realize that, you know, Caltrans is not going to reimburse that, but that's, it's of community benefit. And, uh, so I think that's worth while. I must say that I am also pleased with the fact that we're reducing those big concrete walls significantly and, you know, I like the root wad ideas. Personally, you know, I think root wads on the other side, if they can be worked out there, I know it's a steep slope, um, but, uh, it seems like a good place because I think it does break up the way the water moves there. And I've definitely, I live on the creek myself and I've seen how, um, you know, hard riprap or concrete affects the opposite bank and, you know, the water does bounce, bounce back and forth and I, I look forward to seeing how these root wads do. I've been watching what's happening out in West Marin with this same sort of thing, the Lagunitas Bridge. And, uh, I think we're headed in the right direction and it's, you know, there's probably always going to be room for improvement, but, uh, but I, I think we're going a long way that way, so, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, a, a point of order, could I just say, uh, give you a little historical perspective on the easement issue? You know, your, your consultant told you about the easements.
I'll, I'll, go ahead.
So, um, we purchased a house in late 62, moved in in 63, and as long as we've been there, everyone's used that access to get to the creek. Blackberry picking, kids were fishing back in the 60s and 70s. Blackberry picking, kids were fishing back in the sixties and seventies, just hiking, and, and it, Barbara mentioned the Ager Preserve. What I had done is, is I had gone to, to former residents and existing residents, and I had statements from about twenty residents that said that they had traversed Meadowway, passed that Berg property, and went to the Ager Preserve. It wasn't called Ager Preserve then, it was called Dents Forest. I had enough documentation that, that, that Fairfax could have claimed a prescriptive easement to get to that property, but your attorneys decided against that, and they went-
Frank, that's not the agenda item now, and-
Okay, let me get back to this side of it, I just want to-
But I think the, the point you're making is unfortunately, that didn't happen. In San Anselmo, when they tried a prescriptive easement, Jonathan Braun was personally sued, so I don't think we should need to go off on that route at this point.
Okay, excuse me, let me get back to the bridge, please. Okay? That is a creek, that is a creek park. Fairfax owns it. The access has been on public property all these years. That's a, that's a, it's a public, public park, in effect, and, and the public's traversed it. I can assure you, you can prove that there's a prescriptive easement right there at the Meadowway Bridge, guaranteed, guaranteed.
Okay, well, then, that, that will still be intact with this project, so it would be nice to have the additional easement for more, more people, but, well, anyways, let's bring it back. I think we've had a pretty good discussion on the issue, and would entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the alternate half-retaining wall riprap designed for the Meadowway Bridge, and submit the design to Caltrans for consent and funding. I would also like to authorize the town manager to execute Amendment Number Six to the agreement with the California Infrastructure Consultancy, CIC, to increase the contract amount by thirty-two thousand, seven thirty-eight, for additional services to address right-of-way discrepancies, for a total agreement not to exceed amount of two million, two hundred and ten thousand, six seventy-eight. And I'd also like to appropriate thirty-two thousand, seven thirty-eight to fund fifty-one eight fifty-six Meadow Bridge.
I'll second.
Could I make a friendly amendment?
Well, let's hear it.
Okay. Would also like to instruct staff to discuss with the neighbor to, which property is that?
Actually, I don't think you need an amendment. I, I know that's what you want me to do, so you don't need to amend it if you don't, it's unnecessary for direction to staff.
Okay, and likewise, my instruction to mark out the-
Right, yeah, we'll go ahead and do that. Yeah, that's-
Okay, so that doesn't need to be part of this?
No, no, we'll just do it.
Then I'll withdraw my amendment.
Okay, so my motion stands.
And I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. So, thank you, thank you, sir, for coming out and-
Thank you indeed.
The presentation, okay. Yeah, why don't we take a very brief, five-minute, and I mean, five-minute break? And, okay, so, we're, we're back after a brief break, and we're on to Agenda Item Number Eleven, to receive a report on the cannabis panel discussion and results of the online survey. And Ben, if you want to give us the staff report, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Very briefly, the cannabis panel workshop was held on December eleventh. We had five topical experts, and it was a well-attended discussion. I would say this area is pretty well fill, full up, and as noted earlier in the meeting, there is a link to the workshop on the town's website, and I would encourage anybody who is interested to go through that and listen to that. And each, one of those topical experts had a different point of view and, and information to present, so depending on what people's particular interests are, I think they can find something of interest, in addition to the questions that people posed later on and were answered by various people. We have concluded our online cannabis survey. That closed on the second of January, and we had three hundred and eighty-five responses, of which a hundred and sixty-three are registered. As you probably are aware, with registered responses, we can verify that people haven't double-voted, and can also determine where people's residence is. We had approximately, of the registered responses, we had approximately three-quarters of those individuals lived in Fairfax. The survey had sixteen questions, and those are summarized in the staff report. At the end of the staff report, we also have the specific questions, and some of the, for lack of a better word, the hot map comments, so where people were offering comments, the larger the font, on the, on the phrases or the words, the more people use those phrases, which is very useful when you're trying to get certain feedback. In terms of ongoing work, staff will return to the town council in March for general policy direction on general policy topics. Staff would then return, or go to the Planning Commission for development, further development of the program and regulations, for ultimate return to the town council for their decisions. And if you have any questions about anything in the report, or any of the survey results, or the workshop, I'm happy to answer those.
Sure. Barbara?
Just one, I think one of the things, I sent this comment earlier, is I'd like us to have a map showing the state buffer zones overlaying on the town. Garrett told me you have that, I have never seen it. The only maps I've seen are of our buffer zones for our code, and I think it's important for us to see that, particularly when this comes to the council, before the council, before it goes to the Planning Commission, because people are interested in creating more buffer zones, and with a town of two-point-two square miles, in essence, just looking at our buffer zones, which are less than the state, there's almost nowhere you can put anything. So it'd be good to know what the state buffer zones look like on top of the town. That's my only comment, and appreciate you holding the forum, and I thought there was some really good information.
And actually, just on, expanding on that, so the state buffer zone includes not only schools, which is what we stipulate in our medical ordinance, but youth centers. So, in defining youth centers for the town of Fairfax right now, are we talking about, could you just point the, tell those, what those places are? By definition, by the state's definition?
Well, one of the ones that came to mind was the pavilion, is that because the majority of the programs offered at that locale, at that location, are oriented towards children, even though it isn't named a children's center, it did, in our view, qualify. This impacted a pending application that we had on Bullionus Road, and we're in the process of discussing that with them. We have returned those applicants, their application, refunded their fees, but, you know, that's an example of the buffer zone in, in, in operation. Other examples would be the youth center here, oh, excuse me, town hall, no, wrong direction. So, that would be another example of, of a facility that is oriented towards our youth. So, it's not just the original, when it was originally discussed, and when the town originally drew up our regulations, it was pretty much schools as defined, and the Montessori school also qualified under that original designation, however, with the help of our council's office-
I think you're talking about the tutoring center, not the Montessori.
No, no, the Montessori.
Montessori?
Right, yes. We'll be, we'll be bringing up the, the context of the tutoring center as we go further with consideration of a project that's currently proposed next to Poncho Villa's.
And with, I guess, I guess, first of all, I'll just add my comment to others, the workshop was excellent, very well put together, great speakers. Again, I would, I would encourage any of the listeners to go online and, and watch it if you haven't seen it already. I think it's just one of those examples of where Fairfax can really do a good job of thinking things through and collecting information, so that's a great start on this discussion. Just a specific question, I just, just heard you speaking about the, the buffer zones. If an applicant wished to, there are different kinds of uses being contemplated, so for example, if an applicant wasn't going to sell anything retail, but were, well, let's say a testing lab, well, that may not even be something we're talking about, but if we were talking about just a testing lab and nothing else, so nobody's going to go in and out of the door except the people who work there, would that be restricted on the state level the same way, as far as buffer zones? Like, it couldn't be two blocks from a school? Just a question.
That's a good question, and I will certainly have the answer to that. I know that it specifically applies to both, any kind of dispensary, oh, Janet appears to have a response.
No, there isn't. The only buffer zones are for the schools and the youth centers that are in state law.
And those buffer zones apply to all uses?
Dispensary-specific.
For example, if, if, if a group of people were going to do a, a delivery service, and they just needed the building that they were going to launch from to do their delivery service, or if they were just going to use their building for intake to qualify people, and then they were going to do the delivery somewhere else, would those all be equally under the same buffer zones?
I believe it is retail only. I'm looking right now for the, I'm sorry?
Janet, we can't hear you, you're way too far.
So I believe it's retail establishments only, but I'm looking for the, for the, for the code section. I have to check if it's, it's definitely retail establishments, I believe it's only retail, but I'd have to check and see if it's any other types of establishments. They have a six-hundred-foot radius, school, daycare center, and youth center, and those are different definitions under state law. We only have a definition for school, for our, for our ordinance.
Yeah, those are, those are referring to the question of where the buffer zones are, where you draw all the radii, but then, my question was about what different uses would, would have to respect those radii, or maybe wouldn't have to.
Like, can you put a testing lab next door to a elementary school?
That is what I would have to check. I think it is cannabis licensees, period. Certainly, it's retail establishments, but I would have to check to see if it includes things like testing labs, et cetera. It's definitely retail establishments.
I had another question, if I may. Ben, I'm looking at the conclusions that you drew that are on page four. So you, you several times have referred to, consistent with state guidelines and current town regulations, six recreational plants and sixteen medicinal plants. You're meaning eighteen, aren't you?
Eighteen.
Some places you put eighteen, some places sixteen. Eighteen, right?
If ours is eighteen, then it's eighteen.
Ours is eighteen, but, so my question is then, if the state stipulates six, so our eighteen would need to come down to six, right? That's both for medicinal and recreational.
So you could be more.
No, our eighteen was for a caregiver who is taking care of three different patients.
Right.
Six on each of their behalf.
Maximum, up to maximum.
And that was a ceiling, I mean, if that caregiver had five different clients that that caregiver was trying to raise plants for, it would still be capped at eighteen.
Per parcel.
Per parcel. That, that's what that eighteen is.
So is our eighteen, I, I think with the state law, it changes.
The state law is the minimum, it's not the maximum. So, it's a floor, so you can go higher.
Oh.
They're just saying you have to allow six.
I thought that was just indoor.
Now, six indoor-
It says you have to allow six indoor. And what does it say for outdoor?
It doesn't, so you can allow something more.
You can ban it outdoors if you'd like.
Or we can set our own number.
Yeah, which we did for medical marijuana-
Medicinal, right.
At six per person, unless it was a caregiver raising plants for other pair, patients that had, that had a cap of eighteen. In other words-
So we would have to determine who's growing medicinally and who's growing recreationally, so this will be the conversation going forward.
Yet another complication, yeah. But, but that's the roots of that eighteen.
Yeah, so if you want to grow eighteen, you have to be a caregiver. So, again, a really good workshop, it was good to hear all the different viewpoints, and I was curious about if we had any idea, like, by looking at IP addresses, where the unregistered responses, were, were they at least local, or were there, you know, people from New York who were like, oh?
No, the system is set up, so unregistered means they're not signing up, so you can't tell any of that information.
Well, considering that their distance that they were recommending was twice the distance of the sun away, perhaps they're outside of that.
It could be. You know, our, people are watching our meetings from other galaxies.
Perhaps it's Jupiter or something.
And the irony, too, is that the people that had that fanciful suggestion of two-hundred-and-twenty-eight mill, you know, miles, or presumably people that were anti-marijuana, but I digress. I was curious, too, if a definition of a youth center would also include the ballpark, because that, you know, just in terms of excluding areas where this, I believe that
it currently does include that. I mean, just off the top of your head, it's something that obviously is primarily oriented towards youth, but we would get that determination nailed down, because obviously, it relates to any number of different uses, which could be located in different locations.
Well, it also tells me that we don't have a map showing the buffer zones, because if we don't know these answers, then we haven't looked at a map showing the state buffer zones, right?
We, we look at it when we get an application in.
Yeah.
Right, but, but Garrett had mentioned to me that we have maps with state buffer zones, but it sounds like we don't, if we don't know that answer.
No, we didn't bring it, but we actually have a map, but the question is, it's definitely the pavilion that we did six hundred feet from, I'm not sure if the ball field, if we did six hundred feet from the ball field.
So one of the things that would be good for us, when you give us this map, is to tell us specifically what the definitions mean. So what is a youth center under the state regulation? What is-
I can tell you that right now, if you'd like.
Why don't you tell us, that'd be good.
My crew says what you're talking about. So youth center means any public or private facility that is primarily used to host recreational or social activities for minors, including but not limited to, private youth membership organizations or clubs, social service teenage club facilities, video arcades, or similar amusement park facilities.
When you started it out, you said for recreation, that seems to me that meets the, the ball field.
To host recrea, it's a private, public or private facility that is primarily used to host recreational or social activities for minors.
Right.
So, yeah, so you look at the primary use of, of what it is. So, yeah, it would be really good to know what areas of town are off-limits per the state, because that may inform how we decide what further restrictions we want to have.
I, I have a question about definitions. I mean, were you still talking?
Go, go ahead.
I just, in terms of definitions that the state, and I think we have talked about this, Janet, but if a youth center is, is called a youth center, but it's not called a rec center, or a youth rec center, there are other forms of youth centers that are not, the primary use may not be a recreational use. Not, not only tutoring centers, which is what I think we all know is, is, is going to be in question, but counseling centers, or, there are other things that youth center around besides recreation. So I'm wondering if our definitions, given by state definition, are we allowed to redefine?
So, this is a state definition, and that's the only guidance they provide, and that's it. It, obviously, there haven't been any cases or anything about this yet to help define what's in state law, but part of the reason for the moratorium that you enacted is so that you can go through these exercises of trying to decide exactly what you want to have, and you can have local regulations about these things. And so, you can decide that you have a different definition of a youth center, you don't have to call- to call it a youth center, you can call it something different. You can have different definitions and different buffer zones, and you know, this is pretty wide open what you want to do here, for your local regulation.
Yes, to that point, Beth Green, who was on the cannabis panel, said that when Berkeley was trying to determine to what extent these state buffer zone definitions and regulations applied, and they talked to the Bureau of Cannabis Control, and they said that even though they function in the default sense as regulations, that the intent was that they function as guidelines for communities to make their own determinations about what they feel is appropriate or necessary in terms of adding things, eliminating things. And so one of the things that, for example, Berkeley did was made a determination that infant care centers would not be applicable, that, or that another example would be daycare centers, because as we know, those are plethora, there's a plethora of those in an area. So Berkeley said, you know, that would basically exclude anything in their city. So it just points out that this is a discussion that it sounds like your council is interested in having, and we will be more prepared, including with graphics, when we come to the planning commission and back to your council.
So that state.
Well, do you think we could see it before, I don't want to wait until we were getting something from the planning commission. I would like to see it before then.
I will have a map prepared by Sean Kennings that shows the current regulations as they apply to the sites we have identified and the state's definition, what applies to those buffer zones.
What sites, oh, you mean what sites fit the definition?
Youth centers, the schools.
Yeah, okay, got it.
And again, maybe I missed something, but is that state definition of a youth center, you know, primarily for youth recreation or social activities, is that a hard and fast, rigid definition, or is it sort of a suggested definition that we can?
Well, that's the state definition.
Okay.
So right now, that's all there is.
Right, but so informing our regulations, do we have to adopt that as a rigid sort of state standard?
No, no, you can adopt, when you adopt your regulations, then you can decide what you want to do at that point in time, but right now, what we're dealing with is a moratorium on anything that's not specifically allowed under your medical cannabis code section, dispensary code section, right? And so we only talk about schools, and we have a definition of schools in our code. And then the state has their own overlay. So when somebody comes, it's a dual licensing scheme, so when somebody comes to set up an establishment, they have to meet both the local requirements and the state requirements.
Oh, and the state, okay.
Because they have to get both licenses.
Got it, got it. Okay, I understand that.
And right now, the only thing we've got in place is our current ordinance and a moratorium on everything that doesn't meet our current ordinance.
Okay.
And so I'd like to, just for Bruce's benefit, in the Health and Safety Code, that definition, for example, of school, says, "No medical cannabis cooperative, collective, dispensary, operator, establishment, or provider who possesses, cultivates, or distributes medicinal cannabis pursuant to this article shall be located within a 600-foot radius of a school." So do testing labs fall under that? You know, for example, are they an establishment? They're certainly not a cooperative, collective, dispensary. Do they provide or possess? They do possess, they don't provide. So going through these definitions, we'd have to look at, and we try to only look at and make decisions on very concrete applications that have come in. And right now, during the moratorium, for example, we're not going to get any applications for testing facilities because they fall under the moratorium. But when we talk about drafting regulations, these are all things that you're going to need to talk about and decide, you know, do you want testing facilities? And if you do, you know, where do you want them? Do you want a limitation on their size? What other types of regulations do you want to impose on them? So those will all be things that will be covered if you decide in your regulations and your local regulations that you want to allow testing facilities.
So what will you be bringing us next month? Oh, nothing next month?
No, in March. In March, you'll start your policy discussion, and we'll come back to you with all this information of getting direction, because you recall, in general, the council, you like to weigh in to provide some general policy discussion, so we can understand what exactly we're preparing for the planning commission to delve into. So you'll have your key policy discussions. For example, what type of uses do you want to allow? Is it just retail only or all sorts of other uses? So that's just an example of the general.
So nothing February?
No, because that's only a few weeks from now, and actually, your planning director may not be available that evening. So March will be the next time for, start the broad policy discussion.
Okay. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Bring it back to close off, close the public comment. And okay, so any further discussion or direction for staff that we'd like to offer? So, okay, well, thank you. Thanks so much. And on to item 12, receive a report on the Ross Valley Fire Department discussions regarding recruitment of a new fire chief, including shared leadership model with Marin County Fire. And Garrett, if you could give us a staff report, and Garrett is also staff director for the Ross Valley Fire Department, so.
So maybe some background, as you're aware, the fire services for the town is provided with the Ross Valley Fire Department, which is a JPA. Ross, San Anselmo, Fairfax, and Sleepy Hollow Fire District are all part of that JPA. And with the retirement of the chief last September, at that time, the Ross Valley Fire Department started having discussion of how we would fill that position. And the concepts came down to two options. One, a shared leadership model where perhaps another entity could provide fire chief services and maybe some other services, or your more traditional approach of where you recruit a fire chief. And so since that time, the fire board has actually had several meetings, one of which was a workshop in November to really hear at that time from the county in Marin. County Fire had originally broached this topic with one of the board members, and so at that time, they provided a little more information. At that time, Kentfield also was somewhat interested in perhaps responding such an option, and the board really was working through the issues. And really, where we're now left with the board and what they decided after the November workshop and in December, and before I forget, Mayor Lacks and Councilmember Reed are your representatives to the fire board, so they can probably chime in on this, since John was definitely present there at some of the meetings, at all the meetings, actually. And really where it is with the board now is they received a presentation from the county. Kentfield is no longer interested. The board directed staff to go ahead and retain a firm to help kind of really work with the county and staff and working on what the county proposal actually would be. How would it work in terms of providing the fire chief services and if there would be other shared services? And the board also directed staff to retain a firm to do a normal recruitment for a chief, so we could see the applicants out there. In terms of timing, we're thinking that best-case scenario is March, we'd be able to see the applicant pool under the recruitment, excuse me, as well as an actual proposal from the county that would kind of talk about the shared chief model. And maybe just a little bit on that, because really, we don't have a lot of detail, but in essence, there's really not a cost savings there, because the counties can still be acting as the fire chief. So what would happen is Ross Valley Fire would contract with the county, they would provide a chief, that's Chief Weber, although if he's not there, maybe that's his deputy chief, that's his chief, and they're working on, are there other shared services they could provide to the department that would create some economies of scale? But saving money isn't one of the factors. There are some factors of, we don't have to do recruitment for chief. Chief Weber is outstanding chief, maybe he's around for a while, we don't have to do recruitment, we don't have to worry about, under our other experience of our chief that retired, was only there for three years, had some other operational issues, but that's one of the benefits. On the other hand, disadvantage would be you wouldn't have a normal chief, because ultimately, Chief Weber reports to the board of supervisors. And so those are all the things that we're trying to work out. If we got a great applicant pool, the board always could decide to maybe go down that approach. But that being said, all the town managers agreed it'd be beneficial to go ahead and just start that discussion with our respective councils, to see if there's any guidance or questions or comments you might want to provide to your board reps. I would anticipate after March, if March is actually where we see the written proposal, I would think we would return to the council before any decisions are made, so we could share all that information with the council as a whole, because I think the guiding policy at the board would be, we need everybody, each member of the JPA to buy into the concept, otherwise we probably wouldn't move forward if we didn't have consensus. That's not written in stone, but I believe that was the intent of the board when we talked about this. So with that, that concludes the staff report, and I don't know if your representatives would like to add to their comments.
Well, I think you've sketched it out pretty well, Garrett, in terms of where, what direction we're kind of meandering towards. You know, and I'm, of course, very much looking forward to seeing what actually comes back from the county in terms of, you know, substantial, you know, what that agreement would look like. In regards to the agreement of the different councils, I think the bylaws of the JPA, the fire board, are that you need to have one, at least one positive vote from every JPA member. So it is possible that one could vote for and one could vote against, you know, from, you know, say if it was Sleepy Hollow or Ross or somebody like that, if one member was a supporter of the idea and the other one was not, that would be enough theoretically to pass it, but we're kind of looking for consensus, or at least, you know, a non-objection.
So you're saying that if, I don't know how many are in the JPA, four or five?
There are four different jurisdictions with eight board members, and Peter and I represent Fairfax.
Right.
So for example, if Peter thought this was a terrible idea and I thought it was a great idea, and there were positive votes from the other three jurisdictions, in other words, other six members, then, you know, the one of us that was not agreeing, you know, we would be outvoted.
So if Fairfax decided no, would that kill it?
If we had two no votes, that would kill it, yes.
It gives a jurisdiction sort of a veto power if both members vote no.
That's correct. But, you know, that's just, yeah, for clarity.
I'm new to the fire board, having attended two member, two meetings as a regular member, but I've been, gone to meetings as alternates and been following this in the minutes, as this idea's kind of been evolving, and I'm kind of conservative. I think it's good to try to go down both tracks as much as possible. I think there is some advantage of sort of the joint operation, shared services model with the county, and in a lot of ways, that makes sense for fire, because fire departments tend to respond all for one, one for all, when it's, when there's a big fire. But there's a lot of logistics and nuts involved, so it's good to kind of go through the process, I think, carefully with our eyes open, and so hence the two tracks. One thing that I thought was a positive thing, too, was that we're actually requesting, it's a request for proposal from the county to outline, you know, what the contract would be, so that we could have some real specifics, so that it's, you know, I think the devil is in the details, and the sooner all those details are laid out, you know, really concretely and specifically, then I think the better decision we could make, too, and then less sort of misunderstandings down the road. Because, you know, there's some potential for some misunderstandings and so forth, but it looks like a promising model, but it's also good to have the recruitment going forward, too, because it's good to have options, and that gives us more, if we have to get into some kind of negotiations with the county, it's better to have, you know, some leverage in that we could, if we can't reach an agreement on the details, and the details are very important, we're not going, oh, God, well, we got to go along with the county because we don't have any alternative. So having the recruitment process, I think, is sort of like, I don't know if it's an insurance policy, but it does ensure that we're not left having to sort of take what we can get with the county. I think the county, though, is interested in it in good faith and so forth, but it's a lot of, lot of complex moving parts that have to be kind of integrated. So, yeah, those are kind of my comments and perspective.
Yeah, I could add a couple of other advantages. I mean, the county has a lot of wildland area, you know, and that's, they are, their department is about approximately twice the size of ours in terms of number of employees. They do a lot of training in relation to wildland, and since we're surrounded by wildland in Fairfax, you know, I think it's definitely to our advantage to have some cross-training there.
I'm sorry?
It's, we're not combining departments, however.
Because I don't really understand this, because we would be sharing a chief, would we have access to their training and to all of the things that they?
Well, that remains to be defined completely, and that's what we're looking forward to in March, to have a clear definition of that, but that is the idea, that there would be some of that. I should also say, at this point, that there are some board members, you know, I don't think that that's universally shared with the fire board, JPA members, you know, but there's a couple of them there that are definitely thinking that that's a good idea. You know, but that's probably important to say on the face of it. You know, it's definitely not shared among all the board members, but there are advantages, I mean, there are fire chiefs that have departments with 1,800 fire employ, personnel. You know, we have, yeah, well under that. You know, it kind of depends on who you're counting, but, you know, what are we, we can count it at 42, or we can count it at 38, or whatever, and the county's about double that.
Yeah, so you mean, how many sworn personnel do we have?
Correct, yeah.
Right, so it's 30, what is it? Oh, I just knew this number, 30-something, 38 or something like that.
38, yeah.
38, county has double that plus seasonal.
I have a couple of back, just basic questions. So one of the things I saw in the staff report that concerned me was, if we were to pursue the shared services, I saw something in here that said Jason reports to the county. If we do a shared services, he can report to the county for the part that he works on for the county, but he would report to the fire board for direction on Ross Valley Fire. Is that something I misread?
No, I think what the issue is, yes, Jason, if Jason Weber, the chief Weber, if he acted as a fire chief, he would report to the board and work with the management committee, but ultimately, he reports to the board of supervisors, because he wouldn't be our employee, he'd just be a, basically a contractor.
Yeah, but still, I mean, I guess that concerns me, the whole idea of being somehow prioritized with the county if we had him half-time. The other thing that concerns me is, I know when the union guys talked to me about this months and months ago, they thought there would be savings, and at least in some of the questions I had to you, it looks like there would be no savings, and the county's looking at hiring a finance director and an interim person. And if we're looking at having a half-time fire chief, then I'm still not clear on why there would be no cost savings. It seems to me that if they want to hire a finance director, that finance director wouldn't be working full-time on Ross Valley Fire. There's not that much finance to do, and to have an interim guy helping him. And to have an interim guy helping him, I thought we were looking for a half-time fire chief.
No, as clarification, sorry about that. Ross Valley is looking for a full-time fire chief or full-time fire chief services. The county, in their proposal, would share how they could see providing those services. In terms of the costs, the county would hire a finance director, battalion chief, administrative battalion chief. That would serve their whole operation. Actually, the financial functions would still stay with San and Selmo. That person could help with budget and things like that, but that's serving their whole organization. But it's how Chief Weber would increase his capacity so he could spend, now again, this needs to be fleshed out in the proposal, so that he could spend half his time acting as a Ross Valley fire chief, and then maybe his deputy chief fills in the other half-time for the full 100% of a fire chief. Some of the other things that the proposal needs to flesh out, as Councilmember Reed was indicating, or as it mentioned, is shared services. So right now, fire, county fire and Ross Valley Fire, they do train together. There's some things they automatically do, do together all the time. What's unclear to us is if every department has a training officer, is could the county training officer then take over that responsibility from our battalion chiefs to be the training officer, and thus free up their time to do some other things? But that all needs to be figured out, because their training officer, if they're gone, then our battalion chiefs kind of need to know what's going on anyways, so they might as well be the training officer. So those are all the details that we're trying to figure out. But the reality is the costs strictly for fire chief, 100% fire chief services, maybe some additional services. It's just on the county side, what they would do with that money is hire an admin person, director, for finances overall for the organization that could provide some services at the higher level for us. But San and Selmo still will continue to do all the payroll and the budgeting and accounts payable and all that kind of information for Ross Valley Fire. So that's how it all, it's all playing out. But ultimately, as they say, the devil's in the details, because all we have is, it was a great presentation by Chief Weber, but now we have to really work out all the finer details, because there's all these questions in there of how it would all work.
If, I mean, I asked some questions about, would you have to amend the JPA agreements which, with each council? And I think you probably would, but I guess that remains to be seen. But it also, I guess, to me, it, I think it was a great idea when I heard about it, thinking we would save some money, and we don't need somebody full-time sitting in an office. So I guess I'd like to see the details when that comes out. But I do worry a little bit that the priorities might be more towards what the county wanted versus what we want, and so I guess I'll stay tuned.
Any comment from the public on this item?
Go ahead, Frank.
Frank Egger, 13, Metaway. The massive fires in Sonoma, Napa, Lake Mendocino, and then Southern California have really changed how, how fire agencies and elected officials are looking at, at fire services. Larkspur and Corder Madera have entered into a fire consolidation process and, and starting, they're going to start a new joint powers authority called the Central Marin Fire Authority. I had contacted a few of them and suggested that they just join the Ross Valley Fire Authority, because we have an agency all set up, it functions excellently, and there's no reason to set up another JPA to run a smaller fire operation, but no one wanted to listen to that. You know, the biggest, the biggest threat to Fairfax is wildland fire coming out of unincorporated Fairfax, as John said, John pointed that out. That's our, that's our threat. The Ross Valley paramedic chief is Jason Weber, the Marin County Fire Chief. 90% of all Code Three responses from, from the, from the firehouses here in Fairfax, San Salmo and Ross, are medical aid calls, the Code Three, not all called, but 90% of Code Three are medical aid. So in effect, the chief has, has, has a pretty good handle on what's going on in our communities. You know, appointing, appointing the county fire chief, Ross Valley fire chief, has to really save money. Barbara said, I can't understand why it doesn't save money. It's got to save money for both agencies. Ross Valley has three battalion chiefs also. It's not as if we don't have any chiefs here, we had a fire chief, a three battalion chief. So we still have three battalion chiefs to do, you know, a lot of the legwork. And for these reasons, I support the agreement of contracting with the county, county Marin for fire chief services. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. So in further discussion, it, oh, yeah, closing public comment, no one else from the public here. And so back to council discussion, Bruce, do you have any thoughts or Renee further thoughts about this?
Stay tuned, I'll stay tuned to learn more of the benefits of both.
I concur with what Barbara said, the, I heard the same thing from the union folks, that there seemed to be an expectation that, what would, what they were saying they would really like to see would be more people at each of the fire stations, which of course would cost a lot of money. And there seemed to be, from what I heard, a connection between this proposal in its infancy at that time, and maybe being able to provide that money. But I'm not seeing that the way I'm hearing about it now. So anyway, stay tuned, but that's, that's the main comment I would have.
I just have one more thought, Peter, sorry, and John, is just, you know, Jason Weber is a great guy, and as long as he's around, I think this would be very workable. But I'm hoping that whatever we do, you know, ultimately, if we go to this model, that we have some ability to opt out of a shared services model if it, you know, so that we're not constrained to a 10-year contract, Jason retires and you get somebody you don't like. Just that there's some ability to go back if things don't work out ultimately. So, I mean, I like the idea, I really do think there should be some cost savings. I have a hard time believing that there should be no cost savings, but I will stay tuned.
Good, very good comments. So, okay, with that, let's move on to agenda item number 13, which is to consider council, board, and committee assignments for 2018. And Michelle, if you'd like to address this, that'd be great.
Certainly. So every year after we reorganize the council with a new mayor and vice mayor, we look at the committee assignments, and especially in the years when we get a new council member elected. Welcome, Councilmember Ackerman. I did it a little differently this year. I attached two ways of looking at the council assignments. One, we've always done it by council member, so we have that one. And where former council member David Weinsdorf had his list, are, those are now unassigned positions. But I also did it by committee, so you could just see the list of committees and the membership on them, and it's an opportunity for you to look at, at all of your assignments, since you have a new member. Specifically, though, in addition to council, former council member Weinsdorf's vacancies, we also have two new ad hoc committees that the MCC, MCCMC added, and the vacancy on the Marin Sonoma Mosquito Vector District Control Board, which is the two-year term of Mr. Egger, who's here tonight, or maybe he's gone.
He was here until a minute ago.
Oh, yeah, he's disappeared.
Sorry, point of clarification, has, I saw that he put it out there on social media, is he still interested in holding that seat?
I have, I have not been contacted by him.
Actually, Frank contacted me today. He said he was not interested.
He is not interested, no, because in the past, when his term expired, he had, he did contact me. But as I noted in the staff report, you actually have several options in filling that vacancy. It could, you could, one of your membership could be the representative or trustee to that board, or you could appoint anyone in town, or you could not appoint anyone at all and leave it vacant. And the term also can be for either two years or four years. I can, I'm not sure how we want to leave it.
Why don't we do something like, we just do the mosquito district first, do the ones that are on the front page first, and then deal with the, the ones that are open from David, so since?
Okay.
So just to clarify, we have, besides the ones that are listed under David Weinsdorf's, that's an attachment C, we have the mosquito vector board, and we have a couple from MCCM.
C, yeah.
I can never get those initials right.
You have to say it really fast, MCCM.
They're on the front page. So we have the mosquito district on the front page, we have the MCCMC pension and OPEB, the MCCMC disaster.
Okay, there it is, yeah.
And then, and then the mirror one, which Garrett has a suggestion on, so why don't we deal with those first, because they're easier.
Well, another approach, just to throw it out, from my point of view, might be to just, are there any committee, are there any of these assignments that the rest of you have that you're interested in not having, so that, so that we have an idea of what's in play? I'm assuming that generally, many of the ones that you folks already have, you're just going to keep, so they're sort of done. But if really they aren't, be interested to know.
I think that's fine, but there's also an error in this list.
Where's that?
Michelle had not yet assigned, and she had the A-BAG alternate, and that has actually been you, Peter, for a long time.
Right, is that not under my, no, I'm listening.
It's under, it's on the, under the council member list.
It's on one of the pages, but it's not on the page.
Right, well, when I created the new list, I don't know why that didn't carry over.
So just correct.
Oh, okay, I see, yeah, it's on attachment C, but not A.
So I'll say for mine, I'm not interested in giving any of mine up.
And I also need to mention that Councilmember Ackerman would like to stay on the Climate Action Committee, that's, you know, he was part of the beginning of that committee, and so that's another item that you should probably just.
I think the other thing is, the age-friendly ad hoc task force never formally had two council members on it. It was really, David was on it initially, we never really did a vote on that, it was, it just kind of came about because he was mayor. And then Jody asked me recently to be on it, because I've done so much on those things. So I don't know that we necessarily need to, unless somebody has a burning desire to be on it, but we haven't formalized that.
I believe there was a vote back in July when the council voted to add.
No, I asked, I asked to have my name added, so we did add that, but we never have formalized and said there's two council members on that committee. So I'm just saying, unless somebody has a burning desire, I don't think that's necessarily required.
Okay, then, does anyone have, any of us that have existing positions care to consider offering them to other folks?
I think I'm good where, where I am.
Likewise.
Just because of being midway through projects.
Yeah, you get projects going and you're in the middle of it, and there you go.
Likewise, so, okay.
You know, if there's somebody that wants something in particular, then we should talk about it, but. And Peter, are you, you still interested in your A-BAG alternate position?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Or I'm just working down from the top, I mean, maybe you should be driving this discussion.
Through the not yet assigned, so we got Peter where he was, which is A-BAG alternate.
And we can take off age friendly.
Well, unless somebody has a burning desire.
Unless somebody wants to be on age friendly.
Does anyone want to join age friendly as a?
Do you care?
A second.
You don't have to.
I don't, no, I don't, I don't have to, I wouldn't mind doing it, but there are a couple of others that I'd be interested in.
So maybe, maybe since you're new, you should speak up on the ones you're interested in, on the not yet assigned, so we can actually move through this.
Well, the Climate Action Committee, as we've mentioned, and I'd be interested in the flood zone position. And then, among the others, the ones that seem like they might be a good fit would, and I don't know whether I even want all of these, but I'll just mention the ones that seem like they might be reasonable fits. The MTA alternate, no, that's not, that's not an open one. The, the vector control, I think, would be a fit if we're, if we decide that we want to appoint someone to that. I'm just going down my list of possibilities. The MCCMC Legislative Committee Representative, I think, could be an interesting one. And the Disaster Ad Hoc Committee, maybe not so much, but that's a possibility. And then there's the Fire Department Board Alternate, there's actually three on that. And so that would be probably just kind of filling in for either Peter or John if they couldn't go. But, I mean, I could do that if you wanted. Those are the ones that stand out to me as, as ones that I think I would fit in of the open ones.
And?
I have a request for one.
Okay.
I would love to serve on Measure A Parks Committee. If that is to the liking of the council.
Okay, was that a alternate, or was that a position that David?
There's two.
There's two positions.
There's two on that, so I've been on it with David.
Okay.
I mean, initially, it was just me and somebody else, I think, Larry and I were on it, then it was David, so now Renee wants to be the second on that.
I'm fine with that.
I'm, I have an interest in the MCCMC Legislative Committee, but if Bruce really wants that, I'm happy to have him go for it.
It's not the top of my list, just in terms of what I'd be, would be the best at, but, yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's interesting for either one of us.
Go for it.
It's so quiet.
I know, I'm just.
So did we pick them all up? So we have, so we have what's open, oh, the fabulous pension and OPEB reform. Somebody really needs to take, no, absolutely not.
Wait, Bruce, were you, do you want to serve on the disaster preparedness council?
Disaster ad hoc.
Which is fine if you do. Are you interested in that?
Are you saying?
Are you saying you're interested in it, or are you just asking?
If you were to say I'm absolutely not, then I would step up, but I'm, I'm absolutely fine not doing it, because I'm very involved in firewise, so.
Yeah, I could do that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
All right, so there's one.
Pretty much in the same place, but if you want to do it, go for it.
Okay, yeah.
I got plenty on my plate.
So that's the MCCMC Ad Hoc Committee.
Disaster Ad Hoc Committee, that's toward the bottom of that page, yeah.
Got it, yeah, just wanted to clarify that, because there's a disaster council.
One of the new ones, yeah, right, I know, that's confusing to me, all the different groups that are talking about disasters, but I guess it's a good thing to talk about.
It's overseen by the Department of Redundancy Department.
So somebody ought to step up to the pension and OPEB reform, because that's actually an important one, it's not something. an important one, and it's not something that I want to be involved in, but it's a continual nagging issue.
It is.
MCCMC is forming one on pension and OPEB reform. And I will say, for people who get involved in those, I don't think they meet that much. So it's, it's a good, it's probably a good one for somebody to be interested in, but it may not suck up too much time.
It redefines Dole. It's important, though.
I will say, I think David and I worked on the response to the grand jury for that one, or I did, one of us did. It's really, I mean, Bruce, I don't want to push you, but I really think that's a topic that is really big in this county, and I think if you would consider it, it might be really good because I just don't think they're going to meet that much, and you would learn a lot.
Okay, I'll do that. Yeah, all right.
And I, I would like to continue with the Climate Action Committee as well, and, because we could, we could have two council persons on that, so.
Well, currently, you're on there, and Renee is also.
Yeah, no, I'm the alternate, but I'm happy to drop alternate if you want to put two council members on. Does that, does that work?
Yeah, so that would be my, my ask, I guess, as far as these. Okay, so then, going...
We've got one more. I like Garrett's suggestion on the MIRA, which is, we don't have one. Garrett, MIRA, second alternate, don't have one.
Don't have one.
I thought that you were going to serve as that.
I'm volunteering to be your second alternate, and I don't know if they've ever called, we've ever gone that far.
Okay, I like that.
I know. David was that second alternate, and he expressed the same view.
I would be happy to, to serve as the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority alternate.
You?
I like that.
Actually, it might make sense if I did, just because of the fire thing, the time with Fire Department.
Okay.
Just so you know, they meet about the same time as MCE, because when Larry was on both of them.
Had a conflict.
He constantly had a conflict. I think it's only a half an hour. When does it meet, John?
It meets the first Thursday of the month.
No, it's the first? Because MCE meets the third Thursday. Maybe occasionally there was a meeting then.
It could be occasionally, but generally it's that first Thursday.
Okay, so then I'm, I'm wrong. Okay, I just remember Larry always seemed to have a conflict with it.
That may have been the case before because I replaced Larry on that board, so.
So that's...
So wait, Peter, you'd like to do that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to take that, that as an alternate.
Where is that? Where's that one?
It was Frank.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a good idea. And then, I would say this, as far as the Sonoma mosquito vector board, I think it would be great, Bruce, if you served on that. You know, I don't think it's a great idea for us not to have any representative.
I agree, yeah.
And I think having a council person is really a great idea. You do know it meets in Catati?
Yeah.
You've looked into this, so you're not going into...
How frequently do they meet in Catati?
Once a month, right?
Once a month, but I think it also pays a hundred bucks a meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great.
So at least you're, you know, you're, recharging your car is covered.
Right, yeah.
And, and it is very important. I mean, frankly...
Well, it, it does, I mean, I think that one of the tools of that must be epidemiology, and I work in epidemiology, so.
Excellent, excellent.
There's a fit there. That's what I was saying earlier about things that there are fits that, that seem to jump out to me.
Yeah, that's a great fit. And it is very important. I mean, they, it's like, you know, if you, the only tool you have is a hammer, everything's a nail, and their hammer is pesticides, so it's really good to look at it. They're, you know, kind of a sleepy agency, but it was good to have Frank on there because he was a very, very diligent and very questioning. So that's, that'd be great with, with your epidemiology background.
And then the bonus is council member Ackerman would see counsel to the vector control district more often.
Oh, that's right.
That's right. And you have to decide if you want a two-year term or a four-year term on that one. So that, you can do it by minute action, but you just need to make sure.
I like the idea of a four-year term, and then if for some reason you decide you're not happy with it, you know, we, we go back to this every year.
You only have a three-year term.
That'll put us off, yeah, I have a three-year term on, on...
On council.
And that would put us off the filter forever on our four-year council.
This one is a little bit different. This one's a little bit different, and it's set by state law.
Oh.
And so this is not a position that serves at the pleasure of the council.
Okay.
It's when you make the appointment, that's it.
So we should do two because he's only got a three-year term?
You might want to consider that, yes.
Well, then why don't we do that?
Because even, let's say, let's say if he, he would be on it, yeah. If he, if he were not a council member, if he decided not to run for reelection.
Oh, we could still do it.
He could still do it, and he would be the person who would do it because you put him in there for four years regardless of whether he's a council member or not.
Well, I like the four-year.
So I just want to make sure everybody understands that, the difference there.
You want four years?
Having never been to the meeting, but I have been to Catati.
Sure.
Great. It's the second Wednesday of the month. Sometimes they change their meeting dates, but not very often. It's, it's pretty consistent. They...
Okay.
Yeah, and they don't meet every month. They do take a few, couple, maybe they meet 10 times a year. They take a couple of them off, second Wednesday.
So the only issue would be if you're the alternate on the fire board, the fire board meets the second Wednesday of every month. No, there's only one alternate.
We haven't discussed that yet, but, yeah, I mean, I'd mentioned that I'd be willing to do that, but I don't know whether, okay. So anyway, I'll do the vector control.
I think we've got everything covered. Did you get everything, Michelle?
We, what did we decide on the flood zone?
You.
You.
Yeah.
You, take it.
You're hired. Michelle, so the, the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative, which is down here under my name, has got a new name.
Oh, really?
It's that merger that took place with Twin Cities, so it's called the Coalition Connection.
Oh, I hadn't heard about that.
So...
Is Bridget Clark still part of it?
No, it's two new, new coordinators, still part of the same group. It was a merger.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to bring up one more thing, and I, I don't want to cause hard feelings, but when we originally talked about Renee being a formal liaison to the chamber, at the time we decided that would be not formal, it would be the current mayor could decide if he or she wanted to still continue that. So I'm guessing that Peter still wants to continue that? That's what we decided when we discussed this a while ago.
And we haven't had a chance to discuss it. We just, I just showed up today, and so, but I would recommend that we have that discussion and we revisit what it is you're bringing up.
Yeah, so Barbara, are you saying only one of us should serve in that liaison?
So the way the chamber meeting was always, it was the mayor with the chamber, and then Renee was mayor, and she wanted to continue to be part of that discussion. So when we had that discussion, I said rather than make that formal, that we should have it at the discretion of the person who was the mayor to decide if they wanted to have another person participate.
Oh, okay.
It was always just, usually, it was just the mayor meeting with the chamber. But I'm not saying there's a problem with it.
No, I think it's actually a good point, and Peter and I will discuss it, but I do not think it needs to be an official committee position, because it will be, and right now it has made sense through several years because of, part of what role I've played in the community, but it may not. So it makes sense to go year by year and not have it an official, I would say, scratch it from the official roles, and then Peter and I can talk about, yeah, this year.
Sure.
And I know Rob and I like very much having the consistent thread.
Well...
Yeah, and, yeah, Renee, I think, has a lot of great, great rapport and kind of institutional memory, too, for working with the, with the chamber. So, yeah, I, you know, would welcome your co-participation, and, and I also look forward to serving in its liaison as mayor, too, so.
Yeah, continuity-wise, it kind of makes sense. I mean, in the prior role, when it switched between one and the next, it was a rather abrupt change for the chamber.
Can I ask a question? Do we need a formal motion for the mosquito district? Or for all of them?
We would prefer a motion for all of them, but specifically make clear the mosquito district, who the appointee is, and for how long the term is.
Okay, do you want me to do it since I kept notes?
Well, I don't know that we've got, yeah, I've got a bunch of notes here, and my notes show a question mark next to age-friendly Fairfax, for instance. Is there anybody interested in that?
In which?
Age-friendly.
Oh, age-friendly.
I thought we eliminated that.
Well...
Or you were thinking about that.
I, I suggested that it doesn't need to be two, but if somebody had a burning desire...
So why don't we take it to one now, and then if a council change happens, we could revisit if some, if there, in the future, were two council members that wanted to be on A.
Since it was the first one that came up, it seemed like some people were waiting to see what else showed up, so.
Let's just make it one.
I'll make a zero in the box.
Okay, do you want me to make the motion then? Because I think I've been...
Before we make the motion, maybe just go through your...
All of it?
Yeah, okay, so...
You know, recap, and, and Michelle, maybe just check and see.
All right, I'll do the recap, so...
So maybe do it by council person?
I'm going to do that.
Excellent.
Do you love that? Okay, Mayor Lax, Ross Valley Paramedic Authority alternate. Vice Mayor Kohler.
Also Climate Action Committee.
You're already on there. I'm just going over the new ones.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm looking, so, I'm looking at what's already there. Okay, so then Vice Mayor Kohler, if I, my notes are correct, is MCC Legislative Committee. Add that. Councilmember Goddard, add Measure A Committee. Then, on Councilmember Goddard, strike the formal Chamber of Commerce liaison. For Councilmember Reed, stays as is. And then for Bruce Ackerman, Bruce ended up with quite a lot. Flood Zone Nine Advisory Board Committee. MCCMC Pension and OPEB Reform Ad hoc Committee. MCCMC Disaster Preparedness Ad hoc Committee. Ross Valley Fire Department Board Alternate. And then I would make, when I make the motion, it would be Marin Sonoma Mosquito Vector Board, Bruce Ackerman, for a four-year term. And then for the MIRA second alternate, that would be Garrett Toy.
Also, Bruce, were you going to be on the MCCMC Legislative Committee? Did you want to take, pick that up?
No, that's, I already read my name.
Oh, okay, I've...
Before you continue, wasn't there a conflict with the vector board and the fire board? So it wouldn't make sense for you to serve as alternate if you could never go?
Yeah.
That, I agree.
That's the case.
So I wasn't sure that had been decided, but maybe someone else would want to do that? That's, that's just the alternate, so it's just filling in.
I could serve as the alternate.
You good with that?
Yeah, because I'm available.
Okay.
Okay. So now can I make the motion?
Uh, sure.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mayor Lax to the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority as the alternate, leaving everything else as is. Vice Mayor Kohler, leaving everything as is, but adding MCCMC Legislative Committee. Councilmember Goddard, leaving everything as is except striking the formal Chamber of Commerce liaison and adding the Ross Valley Fire Board Alternate.
And Measure A?
I'm still going through my notes. Measure A Committee. Councilmember Reed, leaving everything as is. Bruce Ackerman, staying on the Climate Action Committee. Flood Zone Nine Advisory Board Representative. MCCMC Pension and OPEB Reform Ad hoc Committee Rep. MCCMC Disaster Preparedness Ad hoc Committee Rep. And the, and appoint to a four-year term the Marin Sonoma Mosquito Vector Board.
Okay.
Do you, do you...
Somebody want to second that?
That included the MIRNA, like, be your second alternate.
Oh, I'm sorry, and, and the MIRA second alternate, Garrett Toy.
Do you also want to correct this to show that Mayor Lax is the alternate on the A-bag?
Yes, it's actually under his list.
I think that was existing, wasn't it?
It's, it's on his list. It's on the top one on his list, so I've got that corrected. Someone want to make a second?
And one more thing, that Councilmember Goddard is not on the Climate Action Committee anymore?
Oh, and...
As alternate, and that that's going to be just not an alternate position?
Right, and that strike Councilmember Goddard from the Climate Action Committee as the alternate. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion?
With a, with a, a change of name of committee, from Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative to Coalition Connection.
Okay, friendly amendment?
Because it's...
Sure, we give that maybe a good pass.
I, I just...
Okay, does somebody want to second this motion?
I will second that motion with all those various amendments.
Friendly amendments.
Friendly amendments coming from all the different parties.
Okay, motion Kohler, second read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just for the record, if you can note, there's nobody from the public to comment.
Oh, yes, and no one, no one from the public was present during our discussions to comment. Item number 14, getting to the end of our agenda. This would be the second reading by title only and adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 9.28 entitled Social Host Accountability. And Garrett, if you'll give us a staff report?
Sure, very quickly, you introduced this ordinance at your December meeting, amendments to the Social Host Accountability Ordinance. Really what the amendments do to the ordinance, it makes clear that marijuana is considered a controlled substance, and now specifically identifies it in the ordinance as a prohibited substance for underage persons, adds party buses and limousines to gatherings where bad, well, sorry, loud and unruly parties are prohibited, and reflects the current practices of our police department to direct underage persons to attend juvenile diversion programs. And with that, with your second reading, this ordinance would take effect in 30 days, and that concludes the staff report.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions by council? Okay, and there is no one here from the public for public comment, so we'll close off public comment and bring it back to staff for discussion and/or a motion. Any discussion or deliberation?
I would actually like to make a motion if there is none.
Yes?
Okay. So I would move to waive the second reading and read by title only and adopt the ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax amending Chapter 9.28 entitled Social Host Accountability of the Fairfax Municipal Code to Prohibit Loud and or Unruly Gatherings Where Marijuana is Served To, Ingested By, or in Possession of Underage Persons, Adding Party Buses and Limousines to the Gatherings Where Loud and Unruly Parties Are Prohibited, and Adding... are prohibited, and adding participation and graduation from a juvenile diversion plan or payment of a civil fine.
We have a motion by Councilwoman.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman.
You beat me to it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kohler, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, it passes unanimously. Okay, so then, the next item would be suggestions for future agenda items. And does anyone have any future agenda items they would like to suggest?
Huh.
Remarkable, no one, no one has any.
Well, this is a new part of our.
Yeah, right.
I didn't expect that.
Of our protocol, so we'll be ready next time.
Right, so.
I do have a question. Maybe it's just a question for Garrett, but what is the process? Because we just kind of zoomed by the, God, this microphone is horrible. We just, we just kind of zoomed by the approval of the minutes on consent calendar, but if there, if we have any minor edits to suggest to the minutes, what's the proposal? What's, we just talk with you ahead of time, or kind of so that when we come to a meeting, we've already told you, or?
If they're clerical edits, you can contact me ahead of time, and I will deal with them. And if they're not, it's best to just ask me about it ahead of time. Write me a note. Thank you.
And, so that concludes our meeting. And Renee, I believe you wanted to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of, in the memory of Gabriel Houli, who passed away by taking his own life in December. And his family, I grew up with his family and his mother, and I would like for us all to send as much, as much healing energy and strength their way as we can find in ourselves tonight. And I think appropriate that Tom O'Neill started our meeting tonight to call to our attention our collective responsibility as a community to see one another and see those of us who are in pain and maybe hiding it, and to be sure that we are checking in with each other and remembering that we are one community. And again, my, my heart and all my love go out to Gabriel's family, and he will be deeply missed and always remembered.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.